Let me know when we have a quorum.
Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you, Madam President. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll do a pledge of allegiance led by our marketing director, Mr. Mark Johnson, because you're right in the middle of my screen.
Thank you, Madam President. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that fancy screen chair, Miss Madam Clerk. That was very nice. Okay, we will go on for approval of the agenda and I, before we, well, go ahead. I just need a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second. Trustees, somebody give a second. Hold on. I can't unmute them, Madam Clerk. They're all muted. Okay, thank you. Did you get your second?
I did. Trustee Ewan.
Fantastic. I do have a correction to the agenda before we do roll call, and that is that item 9.2 on your agenda has been moved to action. And any other, any other changes by the trustees on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. Student, we'll start off with the student trustees. Student trustee Contreras will be joining us a little later. But we'll start with student trustee Stanley.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Handy?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got knocked off again. So we're voting on the agenda to accept the agenda?
Approval of the agenda, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein, is she in here? Okay, we'll continue with trustee Napalia Bellarice. Trustee Napalia Bellarice. Okay, we'll come back to her. Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we'll go back to trustee Napalia Bellarice. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Did we get trustee Brown?
No, she is not on the line yet.
Okay. Let me pull this screen down a little bit. Okay, if you see her, Madam Clerk, when she comes on, just go ahead and just pause and let us know. She is here.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Now I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yay. Was that a yes or no?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay. Yay.
Keep renaming you, so I know it's you. Okay. Fantastic. Let's go ahead and a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
So moved.
Moved by Withrow and a second by?
Second.
By trustee Brown. Thank you. We'll go ahead and take roll call.
Madam President, agenda item 9.2, ratification of personnel items, has been moved to the action calendar?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with student trustee Stanley.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein, is she here? Trustee Napalia Bellarice?
Yes.
And trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Fantastic. Thank you. We will move to associated student government reports.
And our first report is Max Frankie.
Hello.
Hi.
For my report, I am happy to say that graduation is current, sorry, one second. For my report, I'm happy to say that graduation is currently occurring today as part of the two-day voting period for Burke City College. Yesterday was the first day for voting, and so far we've had a solid turnout despite the obvious disadvantage we've endured in promoting the elections. Secondly, we have made plans to support virtual campus activities in the fall, and those include getting students together to participate in educational documentaries, online classes, movies, and TV series. Additionally, our food pantry was, which was started this school year, continues to distribute food to students in need. Students have lined up around the block to get their food and are eager for more. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Next is Israel Kazon from College of Alameda.
Hello, good evening. Can I be heard?
Yes, hi, Israel.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you. As for my report, I think I would want to extend gratitude to VP Tina, President Tim, and the team. Because I think it was last Wednesday when Grab and Go was launched at College of Alameda, and I was doing the counts, and during the first day, there was more than fifty, there were more than fifty families who were able to receive food. And I do believe that the numbers are climbing up. So I think that that's a great program that we do have at College of Alameda. And also, I am thankful for the leadership of Chongwei Cham and President Emil, since I was able to partake in the APA celebration. That it was held Friday. It was just amazing to see how all four colleges participated and celebrated APA Heritage Month together. And also, the elections are still ongoing. Yesterday, we had about ninety-four people voting, and the numbers were climbing. And I think that's it. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emeline Hernandez from Laney.
Hello. I will be reporting on behalf of Laney, and we had a scholarship recently, so the Associated Students of Laney College presented a scholarship for students only at Laney College, which gave out a $150 scholarship to about 133 students. We are currently also holding elections. They end today at 11:59 tonight. We also are voting on renewing the AC Transit Pass. And Student Life and East Bay Community Law Center is hosting a webinar to help undocumented students this Thursday, May 14, and that will happen at 12:00 PM. And that would be all.
Thank you.
Oh, one more. We have one more.
Okay.
Spencer Staggers Elmore from Merritt College.
Hello, good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Stanback Stroud. It's been a while. Merritt is back in the house. I did want to give a quick shout out to Brendan Martinez for giving me the links. I'm happy that I'm finally here to report to everybody. And I also wanted to give another shout out to my director, Doris Hinkins, for all the hard work that she's been doing, especially for elections, as you heard, everybody is going through elections currently, and for hosting and planning out the graduation for all the Merritt students as well. So definitely a shout out to her. And of course, Bebe Johnson, our acting president, got to shout him out, too. The Associated Students at Merritt College have been meeting regularly every Friday. I'm excited for the transition. I'm excited to see what's new and what the next semester brings on for the new board. I've been very happy to be the president. So I just wanted to report that. I think that concludes my report, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Those were brief, but they were really rich in content reports. So just a shout out to the Grab and Go, serving upwards of fifty-plus families. I believe that was College of Alameda. So that's really exciting, and good luck to the elections, to all of the students. And we will move on to Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good evening, President Bonia, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Stroud, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have three campus reports. The first report is from the Merritt College Classified Senate. The Merritt College Classified Senate has teamed up with the Vice President of Student Success and is helping to distribute loaner laptops to students on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Classifieds are working with the Graduation Committee to record a virtual commencement ceremony for the students. Staff are adjusting to working remotely. All are looking forward to returning to work hopefully soon. And lastly, elections are taking place, so we hope to have a full senate in June. The second report is from the College of Alameda Classified Senate. At the campus level, the Classified Senate understands that layoffs are not currently on the table as a result of shelter-in-place and student refunds. With the knowledge, however, that the district was already in a precarious financial position, we would like to know what to expect moving forward as it relates to layoffs and furloughs. The third and last report is from the Burke City College Classified Senate. G. John Bertuso is selected as the Classified Employee of the Year. The CS officer is developing online professional development courses that staffs can take online. And the next Classified Senate meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 19th, at 12:00 noon. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence. Agenda item 2.9, District Academic Senate Report. Donald Moore?
Good evening, President Danila, Chancellor Stanback Stroud, members of the Board of Trustees, presidents of the college, members of Peralta Community College District. The faculty are going into next week's final, and then they have to do their grade. And what an academic year it's been. Wanted to take a moment to pause to kind of just look at just all of the work that had been done in terms of the FICMAT and CBT reports, the five-year plan, the ACCJC actions that occurred. An interim chancellor, a new chancellor, and then we got to here to spring semester, and obviously, we had the COVID-19 move into remote. And I wanted to take a moment to again shout out to our DE faculty and support, who've been doing a tremendous work of helping our faculty in midsemester to move them into remote. Now, we have the interesting perspective of taking some time this summer to prepare for the remote again in the fall and the spring, I mean, excuse me, in the summer and fall. And that's going to be a different, that's going to be a different process, because it's not going to be a rush process. And so part of it is, is trying to make sure that the resources are there in support of faculty to make that move and to really, really provide an enriching experience for students. And so there's been a lot of activity on campuses that I'm aware of, Laney most especially, where we've been meeting with the VPI and with the president, talking about the kinds of things we might be able to do, particularly for our CE and our science classes, and how we might be able to address those issues of competencies for for students who take those lab courses. Wanted to also shout out to, I know that at the Laney Academic Senate, they provided three thousand-dollar scholarships to students. And they were announced today at the meeting, and we were really, really excited about doing that. That's a commitment from our faculty senators to raise up money in order to support our students. Finally, I wanted to comment briefly on, tonight you'll hear about the PeopleSoft upgrade. And at our last DAS meeting, which was about a week ago, we supported the, or endorsed the plan to do the upgrade. We know that Director Mahuli has worked along with the staff of people to really try to save money with Oracle, and they'll talk about how much they were able to do that. And that is going to allow for a 21st century delivery system, enterprise system, for our students, staff, and faculty. We know that it's going to take a while, and it's going to be a process, because we have to change our business practices, and then we have to do training for students, staff, and faculty. This has been a priority for the Academic Senate for the past couple of years, and so we're really, really happy to see that. And of course, I wanted to finally say that I really appreciate the colleges all stepping up and trying to provide food for our students and the families. As I see these families and students coming through to get food, it's been really, really gratifying to see that our institutions have stepped up and are trying to provide that type of service. Oftentimes, we get caught up in our education, and we don't realize that we are also part of the solution. And as this community needs, it's been gratifying to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move on to Agenda Item 2.10, Public Comments. We have two speakers, Jennifer Shinaskey and Lawrence Van Hook.
Can you guys hear me okay? Great. Good evening. Nice to see y'all tonight. I hope you're all doing well. Somebody else is talking. So I wanted to just start tonight by talking about some of the news that came out of the state last week. It was not great news, not very uplifting. The Legislative Analyst Office is proposing, or is has suggested that cuts to Prop 98 funding are going to be upwards of 22% for next year. And that, of course, is going to represent a lot of difficult decisions for our district. And I would really like to advocate that those cuts be made in a shared governance environment with full input by faculty, staff, and administration, and that they prioritize the education of our students above everything else. We are moving to this online fall semester, and faculty have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns about how that's going to look. We want to promote the Distance Education Committee's proposal that no online class has more than 25 students in it. This is supported by the research for student success, as well as the research that shows what's manageable for faculty to to effectively interact with their students. We want to ensure that the training that's available to faculty over the summer is adequate, that's robust, and that faculty are compensated for the time that's going to be required for them to do the basic service of their job, their basic teaching. Summer, we are not paid for summer. We have a 10-month contract, and so it's important that we also prioritize spending in that way. We also would like to ensure that there is a reliance on faculty, that, you know, we rely entirely on faculty to determine appropriate modalities and the pedagogy, you know, required to meet the course outline of record, the outcomes in our course outlines of records. We'd also like to ensure that there's adequate student support, and that means tutoring, that means providing for adequate technology and digital resources. Yesterday, we had a general membership meeting with a huge number of faculty voicing concerns about all of these issues. People are worried, they're nervous, they're uncertain, and as we end classes this week, it's really important that we are all able to engage in the dialogue about all of these things and many others, and make sure that we come up with solutions sooner rather than later. Thank you all so much for the work you're doing. It's nice to see you all tonight. I think that's it. I'm waving to you, but you can't see me.
Thank you, Jennifer. And then we have Lawrence Van Hook.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Lawrence Van Hook, adjunct at Merritt College and the president of the Peralta African American Association and Affairs. Last board meeting, I had a chance to read a resolution in support of the chancellor and the phenomenal work that she has done up until this point. But tonight, that's not where I want to start. I want to start by congratulating Brenda. You have done a phenomenal job. And I want to thank you for the work you've done, and it seemed like you don't go to sleep because everybody's calling on you to put notes in. So thank you. And then to the trustees, this is a phenomenal time of excitement. Thank you all for doing the work that you do. Also, to the amazing presidents, and congratulations to our new president at BCC. But congratulations to those of you who are literally on the firing line in the midst of the pandemic, the stress, the strain. I wanted to basically congratulate those of us who are literally taking on the responsibility of the district and our students in our community. And so it's so very important that you take a breather and congratulate yourself for a job well done. And that brings me to the chancellor, who has done a phenomenal job. This is not for the faint of heart. I think this is like a Star Trek moment, boldly going where no man, woman, has ever gone before. And so I really wanted to say that I need it for you all to take a breather as the president. As the PAU president, we have definitely began to think about how do we move forward not knowing the certainty of next semester, but making sure that we stay connected. And underneath the leadership of our chancellor and all of the things, the computers, the, the internet and all of the things that you all have done to provide for us, I just really want to say thank you. As a PAU president and, and the PAU staff, we decided that we would also honor African American graduation for African Americans, African, African Americans. Again, we're looking at June the 6th at 11, hoping that people can chime in and we want to use the same venue, something similar to what you all are doing now so that we can honor our students. We first of all was going to cancel, but then we decided, you know, it's not the students' fault. And so we must step up and honor them to the best of our ability. And so we're inviting everybody and we will get our invitations shortly because we're now trying to put it together. But I really want to say as we continue to take on this challenge of the uncertainty of not being for sure, we are trying our best to now begin to partner with some of our senior members in PAU so that we can connect with the community. In most cases, a lot of our community, African American men and ladies suffer the most when it comes to the disparaging gaps, the digital divide and academic learning and training. And so we are now moving forward to try our best to partner with the high schools and let them know how they can come to Peralta and have an orientation and begin to welcome them to the programs so that we can do a better stimulus process in trying to make this next academic year that's one that's real inviting and accepting in spite of what we're going through. And so I just really wanted to take this moment to say congratulations to the Peralta family under the leadership of our chancellor doing an awesome job. And, and I understand that there's a lot of fear. I understand there's a, a lot of uncertainty, but we have to depend on the leadership who we've put in place to make sure that we get to a safe destination where we can make the difference for the communities that we serve and especially our students who are more in need now than ever to make sure we provide them the adequate education and the outreach tools that they need so that they can be successful in the future. My son is graduate of a school in New York, I almost forgot the school, Columbia University, working on his master's degree. And he flew home from New York, disbanded because he could not graduate at Columbia. And I had to say to him, like I want to say to us, the Creator stopped the world so that some of us could catch up. And now is not the time to panic, now is the time to plan so that we can prepare for the new adventures, the new avenues and the new things that are coming in our future. And we need to be better prepared so that we can have a harmonious transition from the uncertain to building a better community within Peralta. So I just wanted to say thank you so much and I probably missed somebody to thank, but to the family as a whole, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your support. And we hope that we can continue to end this semester and then begin with a new idea of how we look forward as we move to our next summer session and our fall semester. Thank you so very, very much. Have a phenomenal week.
Thank you, Lawrence. You too. Madam President, that concludes our public communications.
I know about the rest of.
We can't hear you, Jalina. We can't hear you. We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Did I come back yet?
Yes.
I'm back.
Yes.
Okay. Even my internet notification is slow in telling me that I'm offline. Anyway, I just want to thank Lawrence Van Hook. That was an amazing uplifting set of thank yous that, that just felt really, really good. It was just good. I'm sorry I can't see your face. You have a lovely photo of you right now, but I just want to thank you for that because that was very uplifting during a, a very trying and challenging time for all of us and especially for our young people. So I love that spirit, love your energy and really appreciate your, your comments. So thank you for that. We will move into chancellor reports. Chancellor?
Yes, yes, thank you. So the first thing I'd like to do is take upon a personal privilege and ask you to join me in welcoming Dr. Angelica Garcia, the new president for Berkeley City College.
Thank you very much. Feels good to be home. Thank you.
Yes, so Dr. Garcia is very connected to not only the Berkeley community, but is an Oaklander herself and has extensive experiences in really all four sec, all three segments of public education. That includes the higher education system, baccalaureate granting four-year institutions as well as the secondary institutions, K-12, as well as the community colleges. So I'm just really thrilled, really excited about the, the contribution she will make, the talent she brings to the Peralta Community College. I think Berkeley City College and the Peralta Community College District really scored when we attracted such talent in Dr. Angelica Garcia. So please join me in welcoming her to our Peralta family. I'd also like to take upon a personal privilege to thank Dr. Stacy Shears. There was a small amount of time that was a little bit of a gap and Dr. Stacy Shears didn't hesitate to step up and really join the leadership team and support Berkeley City College by acting as the acting president for Berkeley City College. And she made major contributions to our executive team. And as a matter of fact, I think gave the other presidents a little bit of a run for their money in terms of the kinds of reports she was turning in. So David, David said he had to up his game.
Thank you.
So anyway, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, yeah. The, the Berkeley Community College District students and community as well as Peralta Community College District is lucky to have that kind of a contribution and we appreciate it. The next thing I'd like to focus on or highlight for you is that you have in the chancellor's update, a couple of, a couple of pieces of information around the COVID nineteen. There are two important things that I'd like to address. One, the passage of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities, or better known as CARES Act. They both have been signed into law. They both have implications for the Peralta Community College District. The first one, the Families' Act, has implications for providing additional sick leave and additional week of, weeks of unpaid expanded family medical leave. And that is something that has been incorporated and implemented in our processes at PCCD. And that information has been communicated to the faculty and staff and community at large. The second is the Coronavirus AIDS Relief and Economic Securities Act. Peralta Community College District stands to receive probably about $7 million. About half of that has to be used, or not about, half of that had, must be used for direct allocation to students. We have processes in place for that allocation, but we are, we are not in receipt of the funds yet. So we are expecting that and we are hoping to be able to get the funds and be able to make a commitment to putting the, the monies out to the students before they leave in a timely fashion, but we are not sure when the federal government will make the allocation. And even if they don't make the allocation, we are considering front loading the resources in, or a percentage of the resources in order to make sure we are serving the students before they leave, but we have to at least know if we're in the position, if it makes financial sense to do that. If we're in a position, we have to wait for the May revas, which will come out on Thursday. And there are lots of different things that are going on. One of the things that you heard in the Classified Senate's report is they, they heard different pieces of information and then wanted to know if there would be implications for layoffs or, or reductions in force. You heard it in the PFT comment when, when they were asking about the, they, when they indicated that they heard that from the LAO office that there could be as much as a 22% cut in Prop 98 apportionment. And that's not, that's not all. The other part of that news is that it could also be a reduction in categoricals as well. We don't know how that's going to play out and as well as them trying to consider whether, when they'll make the allocation. So for an example, we normally get appropriations in, in June. We're not sure that they're going to stick to that same calendar. We don't know. So there are lots of different things and so we're not in the position to say whether we are able to front load the resources yet, but we will have more information to be able to make that decision soon. As you heard from the senate report, we have been working in order to figure out the, how we will do the instruction in the fall. We sent out a message that says, look, primarily we will be planning to have a fall schedule remotely and that is so that people can make their plans and get ready. And we also can put in place some support structures in order to support faculty that need training and offering online instruction. As well, we know that there are some courses that need to have an onsite attendance because students need to have access to the lab experience. And so we are working through trying to make sure that that is possible using social distancing. But we are still clear that there may be some classes that that simply is just not possible and those classes will have to be canceled. One of the things you need to know is that we definitely tried to keep in mind and, and make the decisions in a way that completely allowed students to make the most of what they've already taken and not lose, lose credit for a class that they've almost gotten to the end before, or they had gotten halfway through before COVID nineteen hit. In terms of the refunds, you saw that we had an announcement that students would get refunds depending on how they paid for the fees that they paid. If they paid with a credit card, it will be put back on their credit card. If they paid with cash, then they receive a check. Or if they paid with other means, they would receive a check. And if they didn't pay, they don't, they won't get a refund. It would just be taken, the expense will be taken off of their account. And you know, those numbers do change. We're looking at probably at about a million dollars right now in refunds that go with the E W. And that, we've made it as simple as possible that if the student requests an E W, then they automatically get the refund. They don't have to add any additional paperwork. They don't have to make any other applications. Well, our guideline was to do it as simply as possible. It's probably a little over a million now as the numbers continue to come in, but that's, that's the scope of what we're doing. And then of course, we're working out the transitioning to return to campuses. We don't know what's going to come from either the local health agency or from the state with regard to the shelter in place. We see that there is, you know, quite frankly, across the nation and on the state level pressure to lift the shelter in place. And so I'm not quite sure, you know, what is ultimately going to prevail. If a shelter in place stays, then we have scheduled, we planned a schedule that accommodates that. If a shelter in place is lifted, but there may be other, it's not going to be something where all of a sudden everybody shows back up on campus. There will be transitioning to be done. The chancellor's office recognizes that, the state recognizes that, and they're developing protocols and guidelines for us to, to do that. The other thing I'll tell you is that as a result of the shelter in place and us being gone, there are, you know, we, we have had some, you know, acts of vandalism on the campuses, whether it's on toward a car, broken windows, or one of the construction sites was bought in and they had to, to bring in their insurance around that. So we paid attention to that and increased, added increase of staffing for the security. And it's, it's probably at the cost of about $12,000 a month. We expect that that's probably going to be a few months, but are prepared for it to go further if it needs to depending on what happens with the order. And with that, that concludes my chancellor's report. And now I would like to ask the, my, the portion of the chancellor's report. And now I would like to ask the college presidents if they would be, would give their report. And I think I'm going to start with College of Alameda this time because we typically have Tim go last. So Tim, you get to go first.
Oh, thank you. Greetings from 55 miles south of Alameda. Tonight I have two items for you. One is building on what our student body president mentioned is last week, we began our grab and go meal distribution, which is in partnership with World Kitchen and Eat, Play, Learn, similar to Laney College and Merritt College. So this is the first endeavor these two organizations have had onto the island. And so we're in, just yesterday, Monday, at our last distribution, we had about, oop, am I gone?
You're there.
Oh, good, okay. Sorry. We had 500 meals distributed yesterday on Monday and we'll have our next distribution tomorrow. So I'll be on campus tomorrow handing out meals. It's one of those things where it's great to see the public. They're so appreciative of anything we can do and this is one of the small items we can do as a community organization for our community to give them some nutritious meals and partnering. And also tomorrow we'll start giving out a couple fresh fruit and vegetable baskets in addition to the meals. So that's been a really great thing for the island, great response. And then secondly, on more non-COVID avenue is COA under the leadership of our vice president of instruction, our guided pathways team has been selected to join the second cohort of the state guided pathways initiative program. So about two years ago, there's a first cohort of 20 colleges and so now we'll be in a second cohort of about 20 more. The official announcement will come out in June, but we had the Zoom call and we're officially in, so I wanted to tell everyone as soon as I got the news. So we're very, very excited to be joining that second cohort and really pushing forward with our guided pathways work, which this year at COA just got such traction. Our faculty and our staff are phenomenal. They really infused equity into our guided pathways work. And so we're, I'm really excited to see where it goes next year and especially being part of the second cohort. So those are my two brief reports and hope everyone has a good day. Good evening, I'll keep seeing you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. Then may I ask Dr. Johnson from Merritt College?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of items to report from Merritt College. First, Salesforce has partnered with Merritt and other select community colleges to identify talented students for their Pathfinder training program, which for the uninitiated is a challenging technically, technical curriculum that can result potentially in jobs at Salesforce and other companies like Deloitte. The program nomination process, it's solely faculty driven and one of our esteemed faculty members, Ms. Carrie Maltzby, identified six deserving and enterprising students to compete for a spot in the program. And we are proud to announce that of the six she nominated, four were accepted into the program. So Ms. Maltzby plans to continue coaching them and connecting them with Salesforce mentors as these students make their way toward well-paying, hopefully well-paying professional positions in the fields. We want to congratulate them on that. I also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible job that our faculty and classified professional staff are still doing to support the institution and the students during this time. But I want to call special attention to an area that sometimes is overlooked and that's our student accessibility services. So SAS is continuing to provide first rate student support to our learners and in alignment with that commitment, they hosted the annual Oakland Unified School District High School Community Partners Outreach Event on April 29th, Wednesday, April 29th. So I just want to take a moment to offer thanks and appreciation to a few people and I hope I don't miss anyone. Ms. Francis Moy, Mary Cidio, Ron Nelson, Jack Smith, Mitra Mafidi and Reagan Pruitt for the amazing, amazing job that they're doing. And also just a special note of thanks and congratulations go without to Barbara. to Barbara, Barbara Demopolis, who is retiring at the end of the term. And finally, I'm always, I'm always excited, we have more student athletes. So Merritt is still to have three more student athletes who received full-ride scholarships and three more athletes who've received partial scholarships to four-year university. So I just want to shout them out real quick. DeMar Johnson, Trac, has signed his letter to attend CSU Northridge, while Brayford Morris has agreed to take his talents to San Jose State. And Daniel Bessalo will attend Azusa Pacific University in the fall to continue his academic career. So they're all getting full-ride scholarships in Trac. And there were three other student athletes who are getting partial scholarships. Marco Enchin, Enchin, Enchin Dia, who is also going to San Jose State, Tavon Peace, who's going to UC Santa Cruz, and finally, Adam Wong, who's headed to my alma mater, UC Berkeley. So congratulations to all, we're very proud of you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Gilkerson with Laney College.
Thank you, Chancellor and Board of Trustees and the Paralta Community College, everybody out there in the atmosphere. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to provide a report on behalf of Laney College. As outlined in my board report that was submitted, we continue to do the good work, similar to the other colleges in our district, really supporting students through food distribution computers, emergency grants, and the, and the like. And so I join our, my colleague, David Johnson, in really thanking those who are actually on the front line, supporting all of our students and all of the efforts that they're doing across our institution. I'm pleased to share that Laney College received news that the National Science Foundation awarded an Advanced Technological Education Grant to Skyline College, for which Laney College is a co-PI on that. As a principal investigator, are Leslie Blakey from our bio-manufacturing program. Over the last several years, the Laney College Bio-Manufacturing Program has been working collaboratively with Skyline College and other community college programs in the region to develop the Supply Chain Bioscope, which provides supplies for high school biotech programs and that have been preparing Laney College students. So it's an opportunity for us to actually provide all these things directly to high school students and to continue that important pathway. This grant will expand and enhance our current efforts and be directly supporting and promoting improvements in the education of science and engineering technicians and strengthen our regional work together. So I assume that both Dr. Garcia and Dr. Stanbackstrau were pleased to know that we continue to collaborate with our colleagues at Skyline College and the San Mateo Community College District. So I'm really pleased to announce that good, oops, that good news. And I want to move to my next, let's see, sorry. I wanted to take a moment actually to actually make a couple of statements tonight, just on behalf of not only Laney College, but I wanted to make a statement on behalf of the faculty, classified professionals and administrators who represent Asian Pacific American community here in the Peralta Community College District. Over 20 million Asians are in the United States, and this represents more than 48 ethnicities, over 300 spoken languages, various socioeconomic statuses, immigration histories, cultures and religions. One is not born Asian American, one becomes one. I think it's important for me, and certainly with my distinct background and history, it is, I shake as I speak because I don't feel like I often am the best representative for the AAPI community. But I will say to you, the racism and xenophobia that has been present in our community has certainly been on our minds. And I say this as I, we stand in solidarity with other communities of color that are impacted by COVID-19 and the pandemic, that this is not something new that happened. It is not a new normal. These are things that have happened consistently amongst our communities, and it's important to make sure that that statement is before you all. And what I wanted to do to explain that is just to say that I really appreciated Israel's comment. A group of us got together, and I want to thank Scott Hoshida, our Professional Development Coordinator and English Faculty at BCC, and Chung Wai Chung, the Business Director at COA, as well as Chu En Chan, retired dean from Laney College. I myself got together with a group of folks to actually coordinate an Asian Pacific Heritage Event across the colleges to really show solidarity and have a conversation and dialogue. So our panelists were two students, Israel Kazan from COA, Liam Zhu from BCC. And we had Pauline Peng Sagara, our Financial Aid Specialist from Merritt College, and Dr. Vincent Nguyen, from Math Faculty at College of Alameda, served as panelists. We watched a video that showed many of news clips in a rap video music style that really reflected the hate crimes and violence and the xenophobia that's happening in our community, and had a really rich discussion, always focused on not only our own experiences, but on what we actually can be doing as a district. And I want to say tonight, on behalf of the group, I want to thank the Chancellor and the Board for their leadership in both resolutions that are before you tonight. The affirmation of our unwavering commitment to student success and equity is important as we continue to serve students on the front lines. And certainly, the denouncing the xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiments arising due to the fear of COVID-19 pandemic. This is something that the folks who were in these discussions said, we really want the Board to make a resolution. And so it is heartening, and I got to tell them that yes, the Board is taking action. And so I think the Chancellor and the trustees for bringing this forward, we stand together, we fight ignorance with education. Hate is a virus, racism is a virus. I'm proud to serve in a minority-serving institution and a district that has this. And so my thanks to you all tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilkerson. And may I conclude with Dr. Angelica Garcia, the President of Berkeley City College.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Stanbackstrau, members of the Board of Trustees, my colleagues, esteemed faculty, classified professionals, our students, and community members. I'm absolutely honored and humbled to be joining you all this evening. And my comments this evening, I think amidst President Gilkerson's comments, you know, in a true educator's spirit, I started to think, okay, change the lesson plan, change the lesson plan. And what I want to, what I want to offer is that President Gilkerson and the work in highlighting the collaborative nature that exists in this district to rise above the challenges and the barriers that sometimes present themselves before us in our institutions, that that event just certainly signifies what it means to rise above, what it means to come together in community. And I think for me, really exemplifies the very best of our district and something that I feel very proud to, to, to join this evening. I want to, you have my report, you have the report for Berkeley City College, but I want to take a moment to really just bring to your attention the resolution honoring the life and work of Joe Doyle. I did not have the pleasure of working with what sounds to be a remarkable human, someone who cared about the multimedia arts, who cared about the Berkeley City community, who cared about faculty and, and training and leadership and education. And the Academic Senate of Berkeley City College took a resolution honoring his legacy, his existence, and, and essentially their unwavering commitment to continue in the work in the spirit of his honor. In addition to, to that report, I want to highlight that the, the supporting students during this basic, with basic food needs is something that's becoming a pressing issue. And you heard from my colleagues, all of the various efforts that are underway. Berkeley City College launched an opportunity for students to come and pick up groceries in every way possible so that they can support themselves and their families. And so we had over 100 students join last week. And our partners are the Berkeley Food Network. So students have the opportunity to come to our campus or to go to the location for the Berkeley Food Network. We continue to grow in supporting students and pivoting and adjusting and look forward to continuing to provide students with their basic needs. Also, just want to highlight this, that, you know, when you have student leaders who work in your career and transfer center, it's great when you can say that all of them were accepted to universities and institutions to model that for their peers. Every single one of them was accepted to UC Berkeley and a few of them as far as Columbia University. And I think that that just shows, again, the, the resistance, the persistence, the resilience of our students, the quality of the education that they're receiving with faculty at Berkeley City College. And I wish, I wish all of the students, all of the graduates well. And just want to close, our student Max shared earlier that efforts were underway for the virtual commencements. So Berkeley City College, 7:00 PM on May 22nd, I would invite each and every one of you to join and participate in that. There will be a YouTube link that will be shared broadly, and it will start at 7:00 PM for broadcast, though you can watch it at any point in time. We are going to have students who are participating, not only at Berkeley City College, but across the district. And I just invite you to attend all four of them. You can be at four different places now. That concludes my comments for this evening, and thank you very much. I'm incredibly honored to be joining this team.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Madam President, that concludes the Chancellor's report.
Thank you for that, and a special welcome, Dr. Garcia. Can't wait to meet you in person, although I think I may have once, very long, very long time ago. That doesn't count, so. We will move into
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, sure, sure, sure. Oh, I'm sorry, and I meant to do that because Chancellor had so much on her report, so yes.
Right, thank, thank you Chancellor Stroud for that update, and also to the presidents for the updates, because they were very rich and very helpful. A couple of questions for you, for the cares. Because the, the delineations are such that we cannot actually disperse cares monies to our undocumented students, have we thought about, or will you be able to talk to us at some point as to how we can still support our undocumented students during this really challenging time? And secondly, the other question that I had is, again, thank you for the refunds for the E Ws, and thank you for explaining that and trying to make it as simplistic as possible. And my question to that, which is probably going to be a, a quick response, is we are going to update the forms because on paralta.edu, right? Because right now, I, I believe that the current forms are not yet updated. It's still a form that was for the old E W without the refund.
Two things. Yes, we, on the undocumented student question, there are a number of ways in which we're able to support students and provide assistance to them. So some of the other resources have been specifically allocated. So for an example, each of the colleges set aside $20,000 of their S E A money. We also work with the foundation that identified an emergency student fund. So that does not exclude undocumented students who are not documented, so we're able to provide that service. And, you know, I don't know what the outcome will be, but I think it was the, the city of San Francisco states took up the lawsuits, right? Right, and then with regard to the form, the, the E W is a new designation. And that new designation is the excuse with, oh, I shouldn't say like that. E W for the purpose of coronavirus is new, that's excuse withdrawal. And that is something that it gets triggered just when you do the E W, you get a refund. However, the form that's on the website is also general. Students might want a refund for a number of different reasons. They decide to drop the class, etc. It has nothing to do with the coronavirus. Those processes have not changed. Just simply, if you register for a class, so for an example, some students have registered for the fall or registered for the summer, and they might decide not to take that class, right? And if they drop within a certain date, they get a refund. They have to go through the refund process, they have to apply for that refund. It's not triggered just because they asked, they dropped the class. So they go through the application process for the refund.
Okay, that makes sense to me. And I, and I guess my only question there would be, we're going to somehow communicate that to the students, because I'm sure there still might be confusion through the process about the process.
We've made a couple of communications to the students with regard to if you withdraw, if you take an E W as, because of the COVID-19, then automatically you get, you get triggered for a refund. And then, just in case they didn't get that, we sent out a second message that said, by the way, you don't need to do anything differently, it comes automatically.
Excellent, thank you.
Sorry, any other questions, trustees? I'll just ask that you speak if you have any questions, because my computer has lag time because of my internet connection.
I have a question.
Yes, Trustee Brown.
How many campuses are doing, or at the last meeting, we asked about the support for students, and I got, I understood that there were meals being provided by all of our campuses. I just wanted to confirm that that was the case, that's what I thought. Are, are Merritt and Laney and Berkeley City also providing food for students and providing additional cleaning supplies and diapers and that sort of thing in the food pantry?
Trustee Brown, yes, each of the colleges have different programs that they're using, and I can ask the, I had the president speak at the last board meeting about the different ways in which they're providing the, the information, I mean, the support services. I can ask the Merritt President, Dr. Johnson, to comment on it today if you'd like, and the Laney President, Dr. Gilkerson. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So now we're still in the, still in the process of partnering with Doug Curry's organization, Eat, Learn, Eat, Learn, Play. And we, I actually have a meeting with a gentleman on Friday, because again, we're going to move our food, our food pantry and food insecurity efforts off-campus. It's a little difficult, a little challenging for some people to come all the way up to Merritt College, to be quite honest. So we're going to be actually across, for those who are from Oakland and know the territory, we're going to actually be across from Eastmont Mall in the next week and a half or so, just to be actually in the community and where the, where the people who have the greatest need, to go where the need is great. So I have a meeting actually on Friday to discuss the logistics around that. A meeting on Friday at 10 o'clock.
So Laney College, similar, probably began first working with the Eat Play Learn Foundation, but certainly, so similar to what President Keres, Dr. Keres, shared tonight, we have been distributing meals directly to students. So we've been distributing over 350 meals twice a week, as well as we'll begin adding produce to that. And certainly, for Berkeley City College, they've been doing the grocery bags for support, as Dr. Garcia explained. So we all are doing different things to support the community. I will say that part of the challenge and one of the things that we're really grateful to the foundation and the World Food Kitchen for is the fact that they're really helping us be able to distribute in a safe way that actually allows both our volunteers and any staff that are supporting to do that. And so we are not actually opening our physical food pantries at this time due to the fact that our campuses are closed. All of these efforts are happening outside with social distancing guidelines being happen. Laney's doing a drive-up option as well as a walk-up option for those who do not have cars. So we are providing, you know, so those are out on tables. We are using protocols to have masks. We won't serve folks without masks and actually having the appropriate hand sanitizers and gloves and things there. So we are working very hard to keep everybody healthy and safe. But the need is so great, and we know this by the consistent numbers of students who are coming and that the fact that this will continue. So I hope that helps provide some information, Trustee Brown.
And if I could just add one more thing? I'm sorry, Trustee Brown, if I could just add one more thing, just like, I want to be precise about this. Actually, the gentleman I'm meeting with is Mr. Shimari Carter, and we're, and we're going to be set up at the David Glover Technology Center, which is on MacArthur, right across the street from Eastmont Mall.
Great, thank you so much.
Student.
What was that, Trustee Handy?
Mar Carter is a former Peralta student.
Got that.
He's now the director there, yes.
Yeah, at a cur, yeah.
At a cur, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And we also, internet, right? At least that's what the Chancellor said, we're also providing the resources available through the Community College Foundation for the mobile hotspot and the hardware.
Yes, I know that, pardon me, I know that the foundation made arrangements, I think with Comcast, that students would be able to get three months of free broadband and then be able to continue it for, I think the price was $9 per month. And then the colleges may have additional information as well, but that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Chancellor, I have a follow-up on this. This sounds like an amazing effort by all the college presidents on the distribution of food into the community, which I think is absolutely amazing. So I take my hat off to all of you. Is it, is it appropriate to use the same, this outlet to provide students and the community with updated information about, about each of our campuses? And it doesn't have to be answered tonight, I'm just putting that out there as a thought. Maybe information is being shared above and beyond food necessities. So just, it just sounds like an amazing way to be able to communicate with our student population.
Let me ask a clarifying question, please. Madam President, you're asking if it's an appropriate, if it's appropriate to use what outlet for communicating?
So the food distribution that's taking place, which is touching hundreds, it sounds like hundreds of families and students within our geographic area, that this is a prime opportunity for us to get information out, whether it's about enrollment, whether it's about fall courses. I mean, I'm just thinking that if we're touching that many families, that many people, that's a prime opportunity to be able to offer firsthand information.
Yes, I can come back with some more extensive information, but I do recall in some of the meetings, the Presidents talking about their experiences and the additional things that they're adding during that. So when students come, they get additional information, some information about enrollment, some information about the online services, etc. But I can, I'll gather the information.
Yes, that would be great to hear at our next, at our next board meeting. So congratulations to all the campuses for doing this extra effort. I can't wait, I'm going to actually look up World Kitchen. I've been hearing so much about the work that they're doing throughout, throughout our community. So congratulations to all of you. Chancellor, does that conclude?
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. We will move into, and I'm going to ask my VP to pay close attention to me, because I've been freezing up quite a bit. So on this next item that we're moving to, item 3.1, which is a first reading of the Resolution 19/20-56, authorizing the amendment of the 2005 indenture of trust relating to the district's OPEB bonds, authorizing and directing the conversion of the Series B3 bonds to an alternative interest rate and approving forms of documents and actions of officers of the district necessary and desirable in the connection therewith. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Bonilla. We have this information on the agenda for a first reading and the opportunity to give us any questions that you have. We also, as you know, have office hours set up so that we can follow through with that. I have asked the financial advisor, Mr. Vincent McCauley, to be here and to make a brief introduction of this item to you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, this is Vincent McCauley with Baxter McCauley, again. We're the district's financial advisor. As you know, we've been on a long journey in relation to this and providing, one, some background workshops with the board over time here and have put in some diligent hours with staff in the balance of the finance team, meaning bond counsel and your general counsel to come to this point. There's been a number of challenges in this process, one being our work with the rating agencies, which has a continuing dialogue, as well as the district has been successful in obtaining a new commitment for a letter of credit from Barclays Bank for the new B3 tranche, which comes into effect in August of this year. And basically, what is occurring is that, as you may recall, there are six tranches or series of bonds that were put in place and they each have future starting dates. And so the B2 tranche basically matures in August of this year and will be fully paid off by the district in August of this year. So that's a tremendous, you know, step forward in this process. Simultaneously with the payoff of the B2 tranche, the B3 tranche will begin. And so these documents that are before you for a first reading as an informational item basically represents the documents necessary to be put in place to start that B3 tranche in what's called a variable rate demand mode, which is very well accepted in the market versus how they were originally set up in 2005 to start out in what's called an auction rate mode. And as you may recall from some of our previous conversations, due to all the changes that occurred in the marketplace since 2005 and namely from the financial crisis back in 2008, '09, and '10, auction rates are no longer viable in the market. And so if we did nothing, we would go into, the district would go into an auction rate mode and likely result in a default rate, which would be around 17%. And so obviously, we want to put in place the safeguards to do something different. And so what is, we're doing different is creating the authority to create a new interest rate mode for variable rate bonds secured by a letter of credit by Barclays Bank with, to allow those bonds to be marketed as variable rate bonds that are reset each week. And currently, those rates are less than a half of a percent. And so that's the reason why we want to put these documents before you and set the stage for this to occur. Again, this is just the first reading of the documents. The documents are very similar to what was done in 2015. And obviously, these documents have been updated to reflect this B3 tranche and as well, a little nuances to make them even better. And with that, I'll basically just stop and allow you to, you know, digest this and see if you may have questions that you want to present to the Chancellor that we may want to, you know, come back and respond to.
Thank you, Vincent, thank you. Questions? I will just go directly to Trustee Withrow.
Here we go. First of all, I'd like to say that this is a very important step forward and from what I can tell, and I put myself in a position of recognizing, I know enough to know I don't know anything. The pay down of the bonds over time, what has you put into place so that funds are taken out in a measured way as a cost of operations, as the cost of the employee benefit package, if you will? How is that going to be structured so that as the dates come due, there are funds available to pay off the particular debt?
We'll prepare, we'll prepare an answer for you and bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Scanning for raised hands, I don't see any. Go ahead and stop me if you need to, Trustee Reese. Yes, no?
I was just going to say thank you for holding the office hours, because I think the 223 office hours are very helpful in digging deep and answering and responding to all the questions in a manner that allows us to be able to feel comfortable with this. So I think the reason why there's a dearth of questions right now is because we know that we're going to be able to kind of attack you during the office hours and that you will respond in kind. So thank you.
Good point.
That's great, thank you so much, thank you Vincent and thank you Chancellor. We'll go ahead and move on to item 3.2, our first reading of the CCAP agreement with Alameda Unified School District. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Bonilla. I would like to ask President Carras to introduce this item, please.
Sure, so hello again. So tonight you have the first read of a CCAP agreement for Alameda Unified School District. I really want to first start out, give a real shout out to VC Brown and our VPI Miller at COA, who are really the people who did all the legwork to get us here tonight. I had the pleasure really of putting together a board agenda item, so you know, I had the easy part. And so as we've done with OUSD, with Oakland Unified School District, we've had a CCAP with them for about two years now. After we got the CCAP agreement with Oakland Unified and got that smoothed out, we decided to move to some of our other school districts. And so for myself, of course, Alameda is dear to my heart. And so we started working with Alameda Unified School District and their team to pull together a CCAP agreement, which will allow a much more integrated approach to dual enrollment. That's basically what a CCAP agreement is for the two entities. And so I have a lot of good work, we modeled it on the Oakland CCAP agreement. We've come together to have the first read for you tonight. A CCAP agreement has to come for two reads to each board, so it has to have a first read with our board and a second read and the same thing for the Board of Education for Alameda Unified School District. So we're hoping to have this wrapped up this academic year, so next year we can start with a CCAP agreement and have much more integrated dual enrollment pathways with Alameda Unified School District. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions from the trustees?
No questions, but just a comment, thank you, thank you all for making this happen, because cultivating obviously the relationships and partnerships with our, with our high schools is exactly what we need to be and we need to proactively be doing. So thank you for making this happen.
Exactly, I'd like to echo that too. And I know if Trustee Brown wasn't on mute, she'd be saying the same thing, where is she? There you are.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
For the CCAP agreement, we're using guided pathways so that the students' courses can be more aligned with the certificate and degree programs we have in our college, is my first question. That's what I'm presuming, so. And then my second question is, what are the programs that Alameda USC is looking at in terms of the students, the guided pathways and/or CTE for the students in Alameda?
Sure, that's a great question, sorry for jumping the gun a little bit. And so you're exactly right, a CCAP agreement, the whole, one of the purposes of it is to build, for certificate programs or tiers for career education. So that's built into the CCAP. Way at the back of the CCAP, if you want to see all the courses, because you have to do every year, you have to give a list of courses that are viable for the CCAP. We have a list of courses and it's a courses for all of Peralta, so it's not just COA. The CCAP agreements are Peralta-wide. And so you'll see some COA courses plus some Laney courses in there, just depending on the pathway. So for us, we're working a lot with marketing, biotech or bio- manufacturing is at Laney and that's embedded in there. For our CCAP agreement, for the CE pathways, we're looking with anthropology and some CIS. Areas to start with and we're hoping over time, every year, to bring more and more courses to the CCAP agreement to keep building those synergies with the CE pathways and leveraging our strong workforce K-12 monies that we got from the state this past year that mostly live with Alameda Unified School District. They're building out their pathways closer to COA. So yes, it is getting students towards some type of certificate or a degree if they transition to one of our colleges for a degree program.
Great, thanks, and VC, can I ask one more question?
Yes, please.
We had grown over the last two years, the dual enrollment program, from about, was it 400 to 1,200? And I'm wondering with the inclusion of the Alameda Unified School District, where are we in terms of our dual enrollment numbers?
I can answer that, Chancellor, if you want.
Okay, yes, thank you, Dr. Brown.
Sure, we continue to grow our dual enrollment partnerships and the CCAPs help expand that. We've now reached over 1,700 dual enrollment students. President Carras spoke about one of the key aspects of the CCAP is the guided pathways or the pathways models. But additionally, additional to that, there are more units that a student can take each semester. And so the aim of all of the CCAPs, because next we'll go for Berkeley Unified and Emeryville, are to, to create avenues for students to take 30, 40, 45, you know, units before they even come to us. So that increases the number of students, the number of units impacts the SCIF and more importantly perhaps is give a pathway for underserved students to, to realize their higher education goals.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. It's taken, what, I think we started the second year I was on the board and it took us a while to get guided pathways, it took us a while to get the courses in Oakland. So I've watched the progression of this and I really appreciate the hard work and dedication. And it was the faculty president, the senate president, that at the time, gosh, Dr., I'm forgetting her name, but she got us these, the open source textbooks so that we could have our students take these courses, because of course, the high school kids can't pay for the education in accordance with the ed school. So I really am happy that we've made this progress because the intent of the legislation is to help students that are undisturbed in higher ed and to fulfill that legislative promise is very important. And I appreciate all of you, everyone that has worked hard to make, to make this something that's progressively taking us forward and helping our community.
Thank you, Trustee, Trustee Brown. If there are no more questions-
You're, Jalina, we can't hear you.
Madam President?
We can't hear you.
Yes, Trustee Withrow.
Just a, just a brief question. First of all, before I get into that, I think it's a great program, well done, well executed. But do we have a sense of the percentage order of magnitude kind of thing of the students who participated in this that end up coming to any of the Peralta colleges to complete their education for the first two years or career technical education?
We do, I'd be happy to provide that data to you. The number of students has increased like we talked about and so has the transfer of students in dual enrollment to our colleges. And ironically perhaps, the success rates, retention rates are also higher than our, than our general student population. So we have a lot of good data points and I can send you, send the board a one-page kind of update on, on some of those data points if you'd like.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow. Chancellor, I believe we are ready for-
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can't hear you.
Thank you. So the next, are you ready? Are you, Trustee Bonilla, I missed the last part of your comment.
Oh, no, we're, I believe we're ready to go into the bond presentation.
Oh, thank you, yes. So the next thing that we have is the bond presentation and that is Mr. Keith, I'm sorry, VC Sata will introduce the item. Dr. Sata, please.
Yes, thank you Chancellor, Madam President, board members, colleagues and members of the community. We're pleased to continue to make good progress on the bond program. And I'd now like to ask Program Executive Keith Gachia to provide you with the update, thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. President Bonilla, trustees, Chancellor Stambach Stroud, Presidents and members of the community. It's my pleasure again to speak before you and give you a presentation related to our progress. and give you a presentation related to our progress on the capital bond program. As Dr. indicated, Dr. Sata indicated, I'm Keith Kajia, the bond program manager. And I'm really excited actually today, because today we're going to talk about some of the great progress we've been making, and we've got a number of milestone events happening today at the board meeting that are moving forward to really start to move the needle frankly, on our progress on the bond program. Here's an agenda of the topics I'll be speaking to, but I think one of the most exciting things is that we've actually stood up the bond website. I think you've heard in my previous presentations, the importance of transparency in communicating progress, providing seamless reporting, performance reporting, performance audits to the community, to the general public, to all of the stakeholders related to the bond capital program. So I'm proud to say that our bond website is up and running. It's on the Peralta subdomain at build.peralta.edu.
Keith, excuse me. Are you going to show the screen here?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was sharing. I'm glad you said something, Lee.
Sure.
Everyone probably would think, what is he talking about?
All right, there it is.
Can you see that there? I can't tell what I'm looking at in here.
Yeah, you are on the bond website slide.
Am I in presentation mode?
Yes, you are now.
Okay, so sorry about that. I'm so excited to present. But here is the website address for the bond website. It's build.peralta.edu. It's on the Peralta subdomain. It really has three core functions. It's outreach to the community. It's oversight. It has a portal for oversight reporting, and it provides a portal for business outreach. There'll be a subpage. I encourage all of you to go to the website and check it out. But each, each college is represented by a subpage that will actually profile the upcoming projects at the campuses. As we start to make progress on the designs, you'll start to see images and renderings of those projects. As we start to define the additional projects that are in the capital program, we'll actually start profiling them. And eventually it'll be also a portal through which we'll start reporting actual progress and status information more discreetly on each capital project, again, under that umbrella of being transparent. Related to oversight, that's a critical component. As, as you're all aware, there is a citizens' bond oversight committee. We have a section of the website just dedicated specifically to that oversight where we post not only the annual CBOC reports, but also the past financial performance audits and financial audits. So that's all information that's on there. It's not only for this current bond, and but it's also going back in time as far as we could find documents that existed related to the past bonds as well. It's really an archive of all the past reports that were done on past bond programs. One of the exciting things that we're about to do is actually start to launch the true, what I call the program management organization. Tonight, the board will be considering a number of awards to what we call our construction management firms. This is a slide you may remember from some of my previous presentations where we indicate that as the program management firm, ACOM, reports to the Department of General Services, that each individual campus will be represented by a construction management firm that's dedicated to those projects at that campus. That's the day-to-day contact for the campus, for the college and their projects that are ongoing there. They'll all report up to me as the program manager, where we'll standardize process and procedures, transparent reporting of what they're doing. Tonight marks the hallmark event, and that will be awarding those contracts. We basically solicited proposals from a pre-qualified list of firms that pre-qualified in a previous qualification procurement. There were six firms that submitted proposals, and tonight we're awarding to three of those firms. Two of the college campuses are being awarded to one of a same firm. We're continuing to make great progress on our standardized procedures. At this point, we're about 90% complete with the, what we call our program management plan. Those are the guiding procedures of how we'll actually technically function within the program. Everything from how we process an invoice to how we initiate the project. All those administrative procedures are included in there. I think one of the important things is really to establish a training program. You've heard me speak to that a little bit before. It's not good enough just to have a manual of how we're going to do business, but it's important to really continually train people as they're onboarded. So with the construction management firms really starting to ramp up, we'll be conducting training sessions with all of them, not only on our program management procedures, but also our standardized contracts, and frankly, a workshop on ethics as well. Our program management information system is really kind of the hub of all of our transparent reporting. And I think you've heard me many times talk about the importance of transparency, understanding where something is in the process, who has responsibility for the next action. That's all done through the suite of digital tools, which we call ACOM's digital solutions. It covers all these items that are in the circle there, related from planning all the way through construction management team oversight. In this case, these four tools that I've indicated with the bullets, ProLiance, Bluebeam, Project Site, and Power BI are the tools that we've actually stood up in the capital program. They're ready to actually flip the switch and turn them on. ProLiance is the tool that will actually be doing our process management. All those critical workflows from how to budget a project to how to process an invoice will be tracked through the ProLiance system. All the budget and cost accounting will be tracked there. All the project documentation for a project will be tracked there as well. Bluebeam is our digital design management review tool. It's a tool that the Division of the State Architect has standardized across all their reviews, and it's a tool that ACOM actually helps the SA stand up. We're actually have written a manual for how all the architects will use that tool, and frankly, how all of the CM teams will actually use that tool to review designs digitally online. Something that's really critically important now in this world where we're dealing with less paper. We're all virtual. We're having a virtual meeting now. The Bluebeam tool is going to be something that will really help provide that transparency of what are those comments and who has the latest action on those comments. The last two tools there, Project Site and Power BI. Project Site is kind of our portal for the construction management teams to actually enter information into our system. And Power BI is really our digital suite of tools that you'll be seeing pretty shortly here on the web bond website. It's basically an analytical tool that actually starts to crunch all the data from the ProLiance system. So if we want to look at how many invoices we're processing, what's the volume of work that we're processing, number of RFIs, requests for information or submittals, those are all metrics that we can track. And I've spoken before about the importance of key performance indices. Basically, a way to evaluate performance with accountability and hold firms accountable for what they're doing. That's really what that Power BI tool is used for, and it's something that we'll incorporate into our bond website. So you'll have reports that'll be posted there related to progress on the capital program. One of the things we've been spending quite a bit of time on is our outreach efforts. And I think in the past I've spoken about our efforts to really consolidate local business outreach databases from other agencies that have self-certification programs, agencies such as the Port of Oakland, City of Oakland, counties. We've compiled that information and we've identified just over 1,000 local vendors. These are vendors that will actually provide services to the bond capital program. So they're now in our database, so we can do proactive outreach to them about upcoming opportunities. In this slide, you see the number of vendors that are broken up by the geographies of the district. You can see the bulk of firms are actually in Oakland itself. But we also broke it down by service, those that provide what we call professional services, those consulting services such as architectural engineering services, and those that provide construction services such as contractors. There's a group of others. Those are mostly service commodity providers. So a firm that might provide, say, fencing material or something of that nature. We then took this 1,000 vendors and we said, well, how many of those local vendors are small businesses? And of those vendors, a little over 800 of them were identified as small. And here again is a similar breakdown of those. Suffice it to say that we have currently over 800 small local vendors already in our database that we're going to be outreach into for some of our upcoming opportunities. But we're always looking for more vendors. And so working with district purchasing, the district purchasing has established something called the vendor registry. This is a registration tool for businesses that want to do district with the, or want to do business with the district can actually register for specific types of opportunities. So we encourage firms to come in and go through the vendor portal here and, and register for opportunities. You can get to this registration page either through the district's purchasing website or through the bond website. There's actually a link to it in the bond website where it says, "doing business." We have a number of upcoming procurements on the professional services side. These are what we call bench procurements. They're going to be a pre-qualified list of consulting services that we're going to be needing over the next few years. The ones that are highlighted in blue here are RFQs that we've actually requested for information that we've already developed. The ones in green are in process. But what we've done here is we've actually overlaid those procurements with the actual vendor database that we have. So you can see there's a pool of 300 targeted local vendors that we've identified for these upcoming opportunities. But we want to make sure that we're getting the word out to not only these firms that we've targeted, but other firms that want to do business with the district. And so we have an upcoming outreach virtual event. We're also going to be doing it on the Zoom platform. We've actually scheduled this first event to be on May 28th, which is a Thursday at 10 o'clock, from 10 to noon. It'll be the first time we're actually outreach proactively to the community. We've actually sent out over 1,000 invitations to this virtual event. Any businesses that want to do business with us for the bond capital program, we encourage you to register for the event. You can do that again through the bond website. We're continuing to also email vendors that are expressing any interest in it. It'll provide an overview of not only the upcoming professional service opportunities, but actually our plan for upcoming construction opportunities, both for large and small firms. One of the, I think the important things that we're doing related to outreach is just not proactively communicating what the opportunities are, but we started to develop what we call vendor workshops. You can see my last bullet there indicates gauging interest in vendor workshops. Vendor workshops are training programs, training programs that are really targeted for the smaller businesses in our community. And, and really, the purpose of those is really to provide equity across the vendor pool. So if you're a smaller business and you're competing against contracts, maybe with larger firms, we want to provide you equal kind of footing to actually compete with those firms. So where you've actually developed a curriculum of 10 different kind of workshops to actually train smaller businesses on how to actually make a better proposal, on how to increase their bonding and certification, courses on public contract law, how to develop a safety plan or to develop a schedule or an estimate. This is a way to actually kind of increase the technical capabilities of the small businesses, but actually elevate them and put them on equal footing so they can compete with the other firms related to those types of opportunities. One of the other things you'll be considering tonight is CAFCAP, the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. I think VC Walter will be presenting that item later for you to consider. It's one of the tools that I would look to utilize related to, again, outreach to the small business community. It allows us to pre-qualify contractors to do business with the, with the, with the construction community. It really frankly speeds the procurement process for us. It makes it easier for a smaller business to actually submit a bid. It's not as time-consuming because it eliminates the need to do such a formal bidding process. It's an informal process related to pre-qualified firms only. So it's kind of in my mind a win-win way for us to really kind of outreach to the smaller local businesses in our community, engage them with the opportunities that we have forthcoming in the bond program. So in addition to standing up the infrastructure of the PMO and all the process and procedures that we're doing, we're also driving projects forward. And we have five critical state-funded projects. These are projects where we're leveraging state funding to move the needle related to these three campuses. The two projects here for Laney are moving forward. It's the Learning Resource Center and the theater modernization. The good news for, on this slide actually, is since I updated it, we've made more progress on these projects. So Dr. Gil, we're happy to hear that the Learning Resource Center is now in the design development phase, and the Laney Theater Modernization has actually completed schematic design. The Merit Child Development Center and Merit Horticulture Projects are also moving forward as well as the auto and diesel building at the College of Alameda. So those projects continue to move forward. We're starting to outline the next sequence of projects since we now have bond, bond funding in place and working on a bond spending plan that we look forward to presenting to the board in the next few meetings here. With that, if you have any questions, happy to take any questions on the bond program.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Kajia. My internet is so.
How do I stop sharing here? Okay, there you go. Sorry about my technology glitch there. I got too excited. I forgot to turn my slide deck on.
Yeah, no, that's quite all right. That was a great presentation, and there are going to be lots of questions. So thank you. Welcome, trustee Weinstein.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and open up. We'll start with trustee Brown.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report. I have a question regarding the participation of local businesses and minority businesses. Section 2000 of the Public Contract Code allows the public, public agencies to track and to have policies that support local businesses and minority businesses or small businesses and minority businesses. And in terms of accountability, we owe a debt of gratitude to our community that approved the $800 million bond and the $200 million parcel tax. And is there, in the reports that you'll be doing, tracking the vendors? A record or a, will we be getting reports that show us how many small businesses and minority businesses, local businesses are receiving contracts? For us that are elected by our communities, it's important when we pass, when they help us pass bonds with the idea that the money will circulate in the local area, that that actually happens. And in terms of accountability, it's a key factor for the Peralta district as an economic engine, as well as a educational institution that is providing stability or should be providing stability in terms of educational opportunities for, and employment opportunities. So the two-part question, one, how will we get reports to track who's getting hired? And who on your team, is Bonnie James going to be doing that for us? What, those people that we saw when they approved your contract, which one of them will be providing this, these reports to us?
Sure. Thank you, trustee Brown. Two things there. As, as far as how we're tracking it, one of the great things about some of those digital tools I was referring to on our program management information system is that that ProLiance software is being structured now with the cost accounting structure for us to be able to track specifically the amount of spend and what's being processed as far as invoices to small businesses. It tracks it not only where they're a prime, and they might hold a prime contract, but where they hold a subcontract to a prime as well, which is very unique to be able to capture that level of detail. That's only because we're able to set up these systems upfront. It's frankly, at this point, it's all tied to Measure G and all those things that we'll be processing through our system. But we set up a very specific procedure to track that very specific metric. We'll be posting that type of information on an ongoing basis as we start to consolidate and start making payments against Measure G. It'll be one of the standardized reports that'll come out of our program management information system. As, as far as the folks that'll be involved in that, you may remember as well that Shonda Scott from 360 Total Concepts was also in our presentation. She's our outreach manager and coordinator. She's been instrumental in all of these outreach efforts related to actually consolidating that data that I showed to you in those pie charts today. Bonnie James is working closely with us related to, he actually, those small business workshops that I was referring to, the, the curriculum of the 10 courses. And he's a driving factor related to the structure of what those courses look like and the types of things that small businesses would be most interested in.
Great, thank you. And that is also, the question also includes minority businesses? That's permissible under the Public Contract Code. Will we get records of how many minority businesses are hired? Because when we, when we're being accountable to our community, will of course need to report the demographics of who's hired. Will we get that information from your company?
You know, I'll, I'll have to get back to you to confirm that we'll have that type of information on the profiles of the firms. on the profiles of the firms. We were frankly focusing on the small component, but certainly minority, to the extent that we have the data related to the firm, we can certainly pull that as well. So I'll work with Shonda closely to see if we can also track that other metric related to the profiles of those vendors that we're tracking.
I would suggest that if we don't have a software that could do that, we make that a priority. As far as I remember, the board said that that's what we wanted when we approved the contract. And it's also, we're one of the community colleges in the state that has a local vendor and minority vendor program. So it's part of our policy and part of our institutional history. So that's actually not a, also include item, that's a key item for accountability.
And Trustee Brown, if I can just jump in, pardon me for interrupting. I just want to say that that is something that we'll be tracking and we'll work closely with AECOM team and specifically Keith to ensure a way that we can do that. Were we to have been in kind of a regular mode here, some of our outreach efforts that Keith talked about were supposed to be live and that would have been enough a way for us to better get to know our small contracting community? But we're going to try to do the same thing through the online model. So thank you for raising the issue and we are committed to getting that done.
Thank you, VC Sada.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. I have Trustee Handy.
Brenda's messing with my unmute button. Okay, so just in response to the comments that I've heard, small, local, minority, female-owned is our priority, absolute priority. And my question here is, you, I heard a comment that they would be working to try to identify those. These people have been trying to work with us for the full time that I've been here at the district, people who worked on receiving our bond. We have many minority contracting organizations, female organizations. How is your company specifically working with the people in general services who already know who these vendors are and who already worked with them? Shonda Scott does not work with Peralta. This is new, so she would not be aware of our processes. How is that collaboration help taking place right now with those existing employees who know who our vendors are, know who our previous lists were and people who have tried to? I don't think that we need to reinvent the wheel. I just want to know how we're coordinating the wheel. And then my last question is this, many people in the construction area, small local businesses, are not necessarily tech savvy. This is something very new. And I'm glad to see that we're trying to work on the virtual piece, but then again, there's got to be some phone calling and stuff to pull in these people who have been loyal to us. And like I said, if I know their names, then everybody else should know their names because they're available. But we've got to go, we can't have an expectation that an industry that is not really a tech industry is now going to be able to, or will be receiving our information through email or whatever. I'd like to hear again how, as you refine this, how you're going to definitely draw in that community? Because if you don't find them, then they find us. And I really don't want the phone calls. I want to be able to, to be real clear in knowing that people are getting their opportunity to work and sustain their families just as, just as well as the large organizations are able to do that. Thank you.
Trustee Handy, I just want to reaffirm what you're saying. We will absolutely get on that right away. And again, it'll be my responsibility to work with the AECOM team to make sure that we use all methods of communication available to us as well as take advantage of our existing staff and not only the professional, professional program managers, but also our internal staff, including Brian Slaughter, who's, you know, has a database. So we'll, we'll use all available methods to make sure we reach the community. And I know, I do know that a few folks have done some outreach and we'll make sure that we go back to them as well.
Yeah, I'm really, just, I'm really, this is something that's very important to me and my concern is this, when our last Director of General Services was transitioned out, there was no transfer of knowledge. And there is a lot of history, a small, local, minority, female, good and bad history where we have maybe hired them and then not been able to pay them on time and they lost their, their companies or whatever. That information is what I'm most concerned about. If, you know, going back over the years, everyone who's ever signed up to be on the list with us or whatever, that's what I want to make sure that before we go out looking for new, that we've made sure that those who have been waiting patiently are aware of all of these services that are available. I really like the concept of having the training to help these small businesses once they come on board or even if they get on board. I really like that concept, but I also want to make sure that our outreach is very, very strong to the people in this community. And, and also that when we, when we define small business, small, local, minority business, it cannot be like some companies who come in from another city and have one employee in Oakland and one female who is the secretary and claim that that is a small, local, minority participation. This is very, very important to our community and they will be watching to make sure that now that we finally have the bond, that they are absolutely included. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee.
If I could maybe add to respond to Trustee Handy, related to kind of coordination of existing lists, our list that was developed was initially started with the purchasing database of vendors that, of firms that have done work with the district. We pulled from those, those smaller firms or those firms frankly, that would do business on the bond side for a capital program. And that was a subset of some of those local firms. So we do have those identified specifically in our database, those metrics that I was referring to of the thousand and the eight, over 800 firms, they're in that pool and we know who those firms are. So we can actually target them specifically. As far as, you know, the virtual outreach events and, and you know, obviously the tech savviness of firms, Shonda and our team are, are outreach by phone as well to make sure that we're communicating. What we're looking forward to is really where the shelter in place orders are lifted and we get more into a routine where we could actually engage more personally with the, the local business community. But until then, we're, we're also not only just doing the virtual workshops, but we're calling, we're trying to connect that way as well. Our CMs will actually be reaching out to vendors as well on phone when upcoming opportunities are coming up. So we're going to try to leverage all of those kind of tools since we can't really kind of get together in person at this point in time.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the trustees? I have a couple follow-up, but I will definitely, Trustee Reese.
My question is about documentation. I visited the site a little while ago and the site is great. It's so much better than what we had before, so thank you for that. But I'm looking at the oversight and for the committee annual reports, I know you mentioned that there were only, the documents that you were able to get are the ones that you were able to put up, but it concerns me that we only have the annual report for 2016 and 2015 and we are in 2020. So was that because you couldn't find or we could not provide? Maybe that's a better way of putting it, 17, 18 and potentially 19?
Trustee, I'll answer that question. As it turns out, the CBOC did not write reports in those two years. It happened before my arrival. We don't know why, but they didn't write a report. It is their report to write, so the current Chair of the Committee is well aware that, you know, this would be the expectation going forward and she is well-prepared and ready to prepare the report that would be presented to the board. I don't have any information about why it was not written in the previous two years.
So my follow-up question is, and I don't know if you can respond to this, but what are the implications of not having an annual report from the COC those years as it relates to a public bond?
I'll have to look into that from a legal perspective. I don't have any information to share with you this one.
Yes, please do, because that's very concerning.
Chancellor, thank you for that. Chancellor, that would be a good follow-up to figure out what happened to those reports. I, I can't imagine that they don't exist. So we'll, we'll definitely have you take that under advisement. Does that sound okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other trustees? Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Whitro? Good? So let me just thank you, first of all, for the presentation. And I thought it was, I thought it was good. I thought it was very good, very promising. There's a lot of structure, the website. And so on the issue of minority contracting, which is of high importance to the Peralta Board of Trustees, as you heard, I also want to offer that the City of Oakland and the Port of Oakland have most recently completed their disparity study related specifically to minority contracting. Those would be amazing reports to be shared with you because they will give you relatively live updates on minority contracting firms, which include professional services and construction as well. So I can definitely follow up with the Chancellor and provide her with that information. My next piece is really related to, we're moving quickly and this was kind of a hurry up and wait. We passed the bond. We've taken all this time to get to where we're at today. We're completely pleased that we see traction moving. But I do have a concern, and this is really for the Chancellor to take under advisement because I've mentioned it before, which is we have an existing project labor agreement that figures prominently into this bond, but I've not heard any updates about the progress of our project labor agreements, which are tied very specifically into our pre-bids, our walkthroughs and our certified payrolls, which is all contract compliance. But I've not heard anything related to that. So if there's no information to share today about this, I definitely will table so that in two weeks, we will get an update on the progress of our project labor agreement and updating status on that. Otherwise, thank you so much. This was amazing. And with that, Chancellor, we'll move to the next presentation, your Oracle presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. May I ask GC Warden to introduce the item, please?
So.
Sir, before, before we go, we have one more question by Trustee Brown.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, thank you so much. Sorry, I'm, I am using the phone because my internet keeps dropping and freezing. So I appreciate the patience. One additional question is that it's my understanding that the PLA remains active, remains in place, rolls over and that we were only looking at making some amendments or some updates, but it should still be a part of our bond program. That's my understanding. Just wanted to make sure that was everyone else's understanding because I am of the understanding that we are working under a PLA that's active. We were only making amendments to it, so we would still be following the PLA as we award the contract and that we would, when we get to actual letting of bids, we would then be able to hear which of the, would, it would be included in the reports to the board that the projects were, were PLA inclusive or that they were, they fell under the PLA. So that, that was what I was actually expecting to see continuing going forward. Is that everyone else's understanding?
I, I have a similar, similar understanding, Trustee Brown, yes. But we're not sure.
May I ask VC Sada to speak to that, Trustee?
Sure, sure.
I, I think what I would like to say generally is why don't, if you would give us a few weeks to prepare kind of a summary update on the status of the PLA. We certainly have been using the PLA on our one large project currently, which is the COA New Center for Liberal Arts. That is a PLA project. And what I'd like to do, we have been doing some review on existing PLA. And if you would give us a few weeks to prepare a more formal presentation, we can hopefully answer your questions and provide you with our opinion of the existing document. It is a, it was written several years ago and does have several amendments that have been made to it. Some are formal amendments and some are partial side letters. And so I think we need to do a little bit more homework for the group here and prepare a little bit more structured report.
Thank you, VC Sada and thank you, Chancellor. We look forward to that update and we will go ahead and move you into our next presentation.
Okay, it's my pleasure for us to be able to present to you this presentation. The, for a long time, Peralta has dealt with needing to increase or update or modernize this technological infrastructure. We have been using processes that don't necessarily leverage the available technology. And a lot of work has been done to get us to this point. I'm really excited about the leadership that GC Warden and Antoine Mehuli have provided to be able to make this presentation. And with that, I'd like to ask GC Warden to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chancellor. I just want to note that my video will be off because I keep getting a message saying that my internet is unstable and I get that less often if the video isn't on. That being said, I'm actually going to turn it over to our Director of IT, Director Antoine Mehuli. I'm sorry, I'm still working on saying your, your, your last name correctly and I've been practicing. But with that said, I'll, I'll hand it off to him. He'll give the introduction and then I will give some closing comments.
Yes, and Chancellor, thank you for getting my name right this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees, and thank you, Chancellor Stroud, and thank you, members of the public. So we are here with GC, GC Warden and also Mike Tolan to introduce the PeopleSoft upgrade. And this upgrade will be on two parts. The first part would be the technical upgrade and the second part would be the business enhancement upgrade. Just saying that, I just wanted to take the moment to thank the DTC, the District Technology Committee, and also DAS, the District Academic Senate for the participation and also feedback to the process of vetting this project. So thank you. Saying that, I'm going to turn it off to Mike Tolan from Oracle. He will be doing the presentation. Thank you. Mike?
Mr. Tolan is muted.
We also just need to pull up the slide deck and share the screen with, with the, those gathered. Thank you. Brenda, can you, can you unmute, excuse me, unmute Mike? There you go, he's unmuted.
I'm here now. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Again, my name is Mike Tolan, so thank you, President, Chancellor and trustees of Peralta. First off, on a personal note, the outpouring to your community and to your students and your staff I've heard tonight is, is very impressive, so please commend yourself for that effort. But as, as Antoine introduced, we will be talking about the upgrade and modernization of your PeopleSoft platform. So we'll go through this. We have looked at. So we'll go through this. We have looked at this in three phases. First phase is the application modernization. Second phase, per Antoine's comment, is the business process enhancement and implementation of modules within PeopleSoft that will make your business processes more efficient. And then Delia will go back in and talk about the five-year operations plan. Okay, so currently, Peralta runs on an old version of PeopleSoft Campus Solutions or Student Portal, also an old version of your H R benefits payroll system. Those are all currently running on version nine dot zero. Those are an extended level of support with Oracle. So those are kind of the first piece that we're looking to update and modernize. We have the Oracle commitment to this project, up to and including our Senior Vice President, who lives in Pleasanton, and will be the executive sponsor on this project. As Antoine mentioned, we did present to both the D T C and the DAS in order to get a holistic support model going forward with this project. So we do have that in place. We've got the full commitment of Oracle. So some of the other issues we're looking to address here are system access and security. We're going to be moving the PeopleSoft platform from Microsoft Azure to the Oracle Cloud Infrastructure. We're going to be lowering the cloud cost model and eliminating the hybrid support model that's currently in place with a model that's fully supported and managed by Oracle. And additionally, we'll be moving from the Microsoft SQL Database Platform to the Oracle Database Platform. Okay? So the future state, as I mentioned, will be moving to the Oracle Cloud Infrastructure. It's an industry-leading cloud platform that we have performed thousands of migrations to over the years. We have, my group with inside of Oracle ACS, Advanced Customer Services, has seventy-five hundred customers globally. We have about eight hundred customers that we host and manage on the, on the Oracle Cloud Platforms. And then we have thousands of customers that we provide functional services for, which we'll talk about a little bit, a little bit later on. Some of the benefits are an enterprise-level security platform and access management. We have very strict security protocols on who can get to the data center specifically, and then within the data center, who has access to any of the applications or technologies that we're providing for Peralta. The plan is to deliver a supportive and maintained system. It will be on the most current version of PeopleSoft, as well as the underlying plumbing system. It's called People Tools. So we're going to get you folks upgraded to the most current of everything. We're going to move to a more mobile-friendly user interface, which is called PeopleSoft Fluid, which will accept, extend out to all mobile devices, tablets, both Apple and Android. So the ability to interact with the system will be significantly enhanced on this new release, a new version. Okay? And then on the PeopleSoft Financial System, that is currently on the version nine dot two. So we'll be doing some application updates to that and bringing that to the most current release point. Some of the business benefits we see across all of our customers is a reduced total cost of ownership. We're typically in the thirty to forty percent range when you take into account the hosting costs, the infrastructure costs, and then the apps management costs. This will be the last upgrade that Peralta has to go through. PeopleSoft has, through its development effort, have stopped the major costly, time-consuming upgrade projects and has replaced it with a more cloud-like periodic update patch program. So it's much easier to update, much easier to add those images down the road, and it makes it a much easier system to manage and support going forward. We also have, our team has direct access to kind of any organ, any group inside of Oracle that we need. We like to call it our BAT phone. So if there's anything that's needed from product development, we have direct, direct access to folks in the product development team, as well as the product management team, if there are any product issues. Our approach gets Peralta faster to the cloud. So the project to get a current system migrated and upgraded will be significantly faster because of the technology and tools we use. And then our Managed Services team will manage everything from the actual hardware and infrastructure all the way up to the apps with a single point of contact for all support issues across the platform. Longer-term benefits include the provided security services and patches. We make sure that the integrity of the system is maintained. We'll provide a stable platform for future projects and any, any future work that may be done. And we're also going to add and provide application-level support to Peralta's power users. So we worked with Jennifer Fowler the other day, had a conversation with her about developing a system-wide training program to help get everyone up to speed. And that'll be fully sponsored by Oracle and provided within the construct of the project. And then, as I mentioned, the PeopleSoft Fluid user interface is a tremendous enhancement in the system, especially coming from the version you're on now to the new version nine two. It is very mobile-friendly. So from administrators to business users to students can access all of their data in the various systems through their, their smartphone or tablet. Okay, and then Phase, Phase Two is the implementation of several PeopleSoft modules that Peralta currently owns but does not leverage. So these were driven by the F C Matt Report and the I T Master Plan from Peralta. So our plan is to implement the modules per Peralta's needs in various areas. First, in human resources, we'll add the time and labor system. We'll add the functionality, which is position management, and then add manager self-service, which extends approvals and some functionality through the system for the managers throughout the system. Okay, same thing with financials. So the E R P financial system, we're adding assets management, expenses, inventory, including procurement, project costing, and strategic sourcing. So how we approach this is we have a very seasoned P M P certified project manager who'll be assigned to the project and will work with the Peralta team. That project manager will be backed up with technical and functional leads as needed. So we'll bring to bear PeopleSoft experts in the different modules who have real-life experience implementing these, these systems, either as a customer of Oracle or as an Oracle consultant over the years. So they bring a tremendous amount of real life and, and business acumen to the projects. And once we get the systems implemented, then obviously we need to get into the training. So we want to make sure that the Peralta users and entire community is fully trained on, first, the differences between your current system and the new nine-two system, which is the most current version. So we'll do differences training that will be, depending on where we are in society at that point. It'll be in-person or web-based, a combination of both. We also have a big training center right down the road in Pleasanton that we can host folks from Peralta, if that works out. Additionally, we'll be developing user training handbooks and manuals, and that'll be a joint effort between the Oracle team and the Peralta team. And then from a governance standpoint, we'll have full sponsorship of the Governance Committee from the Oracle side, up to and including our executive sponsor. We provide very detailed reporting cadence, weekly, monthly, quarterly, on the process and progress of the project, and happy to report back, you know, to the board if needed as we move through the project. Probably be some milestones that we'll want to come back and present to, to this group, how we're doing. And those technical, functional, and end-user trainings will be Oracle-delivered with input from the Peralta team and full collaboration of the two teams working on, on the projects. Okay? So here are the exact modules that we'll be implementing. So the business benefits of this Phase Two piece is we'll get all of the modules that Peralta currently owns in their software inventory fully implemented and configured to meet the business users' requirements. Additionally, we'll provide all of the help desk to support the users. We do that certainly during the project. We have a hypercare period right around the go-live of the project and immediately thereafter. And then we level off into our, what we call our run and maintain support, where the, where the number of calls and tickets typically drops as the users become more proficient with the system. Again, the expanded mobility functionality across PeopleSoft, all three pillars, PeopleSoft H R, PeopleSoft Financials, and the Campus Solutions or Student Portal, all will benefit from the increased functionality and the implementation of the fluid interface. Okay, we use extensive amount of automated processes in our, in our service offering, which makes it more effective. The reporting is very clear. Back to you, to you folks, in the case of hiccup or an incident. And then we help with any type of data management or reporting needs that are required to identify. Okay, the ultimate goal is to be in compliance with the final review risk analysis report from last summer. We'll help the Peralta team with the broader and deeper adoption of the, of the software and the technology. We want you to use it. You've spent a lot of money on it. We want you to use it. We want you to be comfortable with it. And ultimately, we want you to be very satisfied with not only the project, but the ongoing use of the system. And then again, we, we deliver a fully integrated managed platform. We call it Oracle on Oracle managed by Oracle, which we see as the lowest possible risk model when a vendor is actually owning the support and the management of the applications that you're using. So this is a, a high-level look at the Phase Two project timeline. So this will run in parallel to a degree with Phase One, where we're moving the Peralta PeopleSoft system from the Azure Cloud Platform to the Oracle Cloud Platform. We'll be able to go up through Week Eleven here, all of the requirements gathering and design work that can happen in parallel. And then when the Phase One project is going live, we'll take a break from this project, focus on the go-live, and then we'll pick this back up with the actual configure and build of the modules on the new platform. Okay? Mr. Warden, I think you want to take over here?
That is unfortunately not the correct slide to display.
What slide do you need?
I need Slide Ten that's loaded into Board Docs.
Okay, let's, let's get to that.
I will. So I'll, I'll cover some points here when the Chancellor is pulling up that. Oh, there you go. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm using two laptops, so it was difficult to try to pull it over. So if we're looking at the, the project cost here, and I know there's been presentations in the past, and we've gotten, or I should say that the, the board has gotten some differing information. But to be clear on, on this point in terms of cost, what we have done here with the knowledge that in the past there have been, what's been reported to me anyway, is some cost overruns that prevented projects from being taken all the way to completion, is that working with Mr. Tollan's team at, at Oracle and Director Mehuli, we have established the, the project where we're paying essentially fixed costs. And what that means is that we're looking at Phase One, the, the, which is the technical migration, looking, moving from the nine-point-oh to nine-point-two, which provides a lot of services and also additional security for our, our systems. The cost of that is approximately, the precise amount is on there, but we're looking at approximately one-point-four-three million dollars for that. This is going to be paid out of the bond measure, Measure G, which includes our technology infrastructure build. And then when we're looking at Phase Two, that's approximately two-point-four-six million dollars. Phase Two, as, as you recall from looking at the earlier slides, would have been referred to as the Oracle module, or not referred to, what are the Oracle modules? But I refer to them as business solutions, because what we're looking at for Phase Two is the ability to communicate across the different functional areas of the district office. So right now, what we have is that, for example, finance is on the Oracle nine-point-two version, but they're essentially the only department that is on that version. And so the ability to communicate in terms of transferring information, for example, from finance to the legal department actually becomes a rather manual process, because we have different software that don't communicate with each other. And that is resolved when we do the Phase Two build-out. And the reason that it's referred to as business solutions is because it's important to note that while the software provides a way for us to do things, that we as the, well, myself as the general counsel, and then also for the vice chancellors and the presidents at the colleges, we have to really work on being detailed and deliberate about our business processes so that the software solutions that we implement get us to the point that we want to be at in terms of functionality. And that's, that's kind of referred to in the shorthand as saying, bringing us to twenty-first century technology. I like to be more specific, because what we're really saying there is that we have the software capable, well, we will have the software capabilities, and we have to ensure that the business issues that we have are properly outlined so that the software solutions that we have address our issues. The third breakout here is operations. And what I want to point out is that you'll notice that this is over five years. If you're looking at Phase One and Phase Two, as Mr. Tollan indicated, a significant portion of Phase One will run concurrently with Phase Two. This allows us to have project completion in approximately twelve months, rather than the earlier reported, probably, I think we were saying somewhere in the range of sixteen to eighteen months, which is significant, because that's a, you know, basically a full half of a calendar year. And so we, we get to, the, the business needs are addressed sooner. With respect to the operations, that, that row of data, it says approximately two-point-four million dollars over five years. What's important to note here is that, well, a couple of things. The, the, the amount of operating expense is not identical from year to year, because in year one, we're still doing the build-out of Phase One and Phase Two, and so the operating costs are a little different. But this actually represents significant cost savings to the district. If you're looking at it on, on average, or paying below six-hundred thousand dollars per year over this five-year period for operations, which is the ongoing support of the infrastructure we're building out. And presently, the district pays approximately, on, on the low end, we're looking at about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, eight-hundred thousand dollars. And the high end, it's, it's above that. And the reason that I'm stating it as a range is because we're not paying fixed costs. Some of the things that we pay for are on a per-incident basis, or there are other fees that are not included. So to phrase that a different way, we're getting much more services and support from Oracle at a lower dollar value than what we're paying now. And so there's, again, significant cost savings just in terms of, of the operations. And then there are also the savings in terms of human hours required to do work where, once we have Phase Two fully implemented. So in terms of the actual build-out, the project cost is approximately three-point-nine million dollars. But then when you include the operating costs, we get to the number of approximately six-point-three-three million dollars. But it's, again, important to note that when you get at the six-point-three-three million, the operating cost for this, for the new build-out is on a, on average, lower on a year-to-year basis, and then in terms of, in total, over the five years, significantly lower. And then in terms of, in total over the five years, significantly lower. Do we have any questions from, from the board?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I will go to my trustees, and I have trustee Handy.
Okay, I'm sorry, my internet dropped out. It's dropped out at least seven times during this meeting, so I missed half of the presentation. So, so what, what you're saying that the operating cost over a period of five years is comes to the $600,000 as opposed to, you said 700, so that we were spinning. But what's something you just said confused me in the end because it cut off midway. What is the cost of ownership from day one, from Phase One? What are we paying annually for this?
Yeah, so the, the total cost with both the, the technical upgrade, the implementation of the solutions, and then the operating cost over five years is $6.33 million. Well, $6,339,602.95 is the, is the amount on the contract. And so when we're looking at the $6.33, it's important to, to note, and this is probably where it cut out for you, is that the, the $2.4 million in operating expense, we are already paying ongoing operating expense for our current hybrid system. And the ongoing operating expense for a system that we know does not provide the full functionalities that we need is actually at a minimum more than $100,000 more expensive per year.
Okay, and, and the other, I have quite a few questions. In terms of, how is this working? Are we replacing employees? We have employees already here. How is this, what does this look like? How many employees from Oracle are we rolling out? Will they be working here with the district? And we know that consultants cannot direct employees. Are we replacing employees by taking on Oracle? What, what is that part? What does that look like in terms of employee security?
Right, so in terms of staffing, the, the truth is, is that the IT department actually has several vacancies already that need to be filled, so there are no plans to replace employees with consultants. What we actually have is a, a effort of collaborative effort. So we will have our district employees who are on the IT team, not all of them will be deployed to this project, but we will have certain staff members who are in the area of working on the PeopleSoft project. They'll be working on it, and they'll be working on it in conjunction with the team from Oracle, including Mr. Tulen's team, and then the other experts from, from Oracle who will do our technical migration. Again, that's Phase One, and then do the build-out of our business solutions, which is Phase Two. I'm not sure if I'm frozen or if that's other people, so someone let me know.
Sorry, I, I never know either.
But make sure I'm not talking to myself.
Trustee Handy, come back.
I think she's frozen.
I think she's frozen. Let's go to trustee Withrow, and then we'll pick up with, with trustee Handy.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, somebody's been muting us. I'm going to come across as old school, okay? I do have a, a background, although extremely dated in technology. And, but I'm basically a finance guy. And when I review something like this of $6.3 million, I see that as an investment. Then again, as my old school sense comes back in and say, how much are we going to reduce the cost of operations to at least recover the $6 million? If not lower them such that the organization ends up more efficient over time and it becomes a fruitful investment?
Yeah, so in terms of, of recapturing the expense, some of it will come in that, that annual cost savings, looking at the operating expense. So if you're looking at approximately $100,000 per year over the five-year period, we're about at a, about a half a million dollars right there. It's actually going to be a little bit higher than that, probably looking more in the range of like $600,000 to $650,000 in savings and operating costs. The, the, the issue, I think in terms of looking at savings, we're really looking at the ability of the district to do work and, and efficiency. So right now, what we have is, so there's a clear gap in, in terms of we're operating on 9.0 and there's 9.2. So we missed an entire generation in the sense of 9.1. And what has happened is that essentially, we, the district that is, we still do a lot of processing of kind of routine functions on a very manual basis. So we may be entering data in an Excel spreadsheet, and then that has to go through several iterations of individuals to confirm that the data is right. So you get such things as simple keystroke error, but there's also the, the expense in the sense of your, I already mentioned that we have some vacancies in, in, on the IT team. So you have a, a department that doesn't have full staffing. And then you're also taking individuals to work on very manual basis for projects. And so for example, let's say that, you know, right now, we're spending two weeks on a project because it has to be entered manually and it's Excel, it has to be verified. We would save a lot of time in terms of the manual exercise by having these modern technologies. So there's a cost savings there as well. But in terms of the analysis of that, we, we would have to look at that over time in the sense of looking at how much things come down. But to, to be quite frank, having to operate in an environment now where so many things are done, we're acting remotely. And as I said earlier, a lot of processes were still being done on a manual basis because we didn't have the technology solutions in place. That's not really tenable anymore. And so we've already started transitioning away from that, realizing that you can't have people signing, you know, needing a hard copy of a document and then, you know, legal doesn't communicate with the system for finance. And so now we're doing all these workarounds. So there's also the, the increased efficiencies that will result in cost savings to the district, both in the sense of we will spend less time on issues. And by being able to spend less time on issues, we avoid some of the penalties that we've been paying for not getting work done within, by, by particular deadlines, which is impacted by the, the duration of, or the, the amount of effort it takes to get things done in a more manual process. Let me know if that, if that answers your question in full.
No, it does, it, it does. It, there's no question, but what, it should improve the efficiency. But over the course of time, I would hope that we look at it of the full employment involved in the four colleges and the district that are handling these things in a very inefficient way. There's no question about that. I don't think anybody can argue against that. But by being more efficient, we should be able to do the job that is called for with fewer people. And by having fewer people invested in doing the job, you're going to save money over time. And look at it from that standpoint, we should be recovering that $6 million if we keep that in mind that that's what we're looking for.
Arguably, yes.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. I'm gonna, so I've got lots of hands up. I'm going to have trustee Brown, then I'll go to trustee Handy, and then I've got the chancellor also in the queue. And Karen has also put herself in the queue along with trustee Reese. You all remember your order, thank you so much. Trustee Brown.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I have a question regarding the cell phones. You had said that the, the cell phones, the, the technology upgrades will allow the access to the, the system that is used by our students and our faculty from the, from their cell phones. I just would like you to explain a little bit more about that. And then regarding the enterprise system, the business side of the IT upgrade, we have had a few different sort of false starts with regard to upgrading our system. And there's one that we, we didn't have the bond yet when we looked at it in, I think, December of 2017. So if, if you could just give me a little bit more of a background on the, the enterprise system, we have been having to do some of our payroll and HR functions manually. And if you could let me know how, that'll move us from the sort of labor-intensive practices that our HR department and, and our payroll department have had to, have had to undergo. That would, that would sort of give me a picture of how this upgrade is going to collectively, or I should say holistically, solve our, our problems.
Sure, I'll, I'll hand that off to Mr. Tulen, and then if Director Mawuli wants to add in any comments he can as well.
Thank you. So the first piece is the mobility. There will be access for any of the self-service features that are in PeopleSoft. So if you're in HR, you can act upon time-off requests, you can act upon leave requests, time card approvals, once the time and labor system is, is implemented. You can, you can quickly see the entire org chart of a particular manager, or that manager can go in and see his or her direct reports. And then from a student's standpoint, they have, they have access to a piece of the campus solution system that is mobile, mobility-enabled. So they can check on their coursework, they can select classes from a catalog right on their phone, they can check any financial aid they may have, or if there are grants offered through the PeopleSoft system, they can accept those right on their phone. They can register for classes, they can check grades. It pushes a lot of the functionality out, especially in camp, in the campus solutions piece to the students. From a finance standpoint, also the fluid pushes out mobility for approvals, for requisition approvals, procurement approvals, expenses approval, any type of self-service functionality that's kind of built into the PeopleSoft system can be pushed out right through the fluid user interface out to any number of different types of tablets. So Android and Apple iOS are fully supported as the two primary platforms we all use for mobility. And then on the enterprise system, currently, Peralta's being on a really two generations-old of system. There's a lot of functionality that is not being utilized just because you're on an old release. That is part of the Phase One technical upgrade process. There are pieces to the People Tools, which is the PeopleSoft plumbing of the system that with the upgrade to that piece of the platform, it would automatically enable significantly more, significant more functionality through the application. So the expectation is that with our team and your team will identify business processes, just like you said trustee, that are currently being handled manually and will work them into an automated system in the, in the application. PeopleSoft is a 35-year-old system with, you know, I think still around 9,500 customers globally, a very good footprint in the higher ed space. So the system by nature will, will handle probably 95% to 98% of your business processes in a standard format without any customization or manual intervention required.
Thank you for that. We're going to trustee Handy. Trustee Handy, are you there?
Okay, yeah. I'm trying two devices, I'm trying to get you on my phone. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. I'm hoping this won't drop again. We, when we first started out, two, two and a half years ago, the, the price of, of completing our system and upgrades was $750,000 if Oracle did it for us. And then it went immediately from $750,000 to $1.3 million, which we approved about two years ago. And then, most recently, the quote from Oracle was $1.5. And now we're looking at close to $7 million. I would have liked to have had a report that gave me apples to apples. What we were paying for in the past, what we got for the $1.3, especially since this is a relationship with Oracle, what we got in the past, what is this building on that? You're talking about the ease of use, which we all know, our system is antiquated. We were, we were on a whole cobalt system just recently. So we're, we're talking about modernizing and jumping into a whole new picture and pretty much abandoning the $55 million we've already spent over the years that have not been complete. I have no challenge whatsoever with moving forward and modernizing our systems. We know that this is something that we were really deficient in. But for me, having a fiscal responsibility to my constituents, I need to know what we are paying and what we're getting, what we were asking for before so that I know, are we fulfilling what we've been voting for before in the process that we're going in? Or are we starting in a whole new process? For $7 million, I need more than just a couple of days to go through it. I might find that, yes, I like everything that's on here. It did not help at all that I lost communication at least three times.
And there she goes.
Yeah, when she, when she comes back on, I can, I can answer that question.
She's still here.
I'm on the phone, but I, I no longer have a picture.
Okay.
This stuff is driving me crazy. So, so based on this, it's like this is happening quickly and I had no idea that it was coming. So the questions that come up for me immediately, is this proposal based on a gap analysis that was done that tells us exactly where we are and what we need? Or is it based on the CBQ report, which my understanding was going to be rewritten so we would have a clear picture of what we need? That's, yeah, that, those are the first questions that came up for me.
Okay, so I'll, I'll answer that in part. You kind of broke up at the end, but I think you were asking about the, the, the technology master plan. So in terms of, of what we're looking at for costs, it's my understanding that at, at least within the approximately past year or so, again, before I, before I came on board, that there is a presentation to the board stating that the, the build-out would be approximately $1.3 million. And that only referred to the Phase One technical upgrade, which is moving from, from the 9.2. Okay, I was just giving us a moment since there's some feedback there. But in terms of Phase One, we, we are looking at now the, the cost is approximately $1.4 million. What's important to note, to note here is that the system that we're functioning on now, when we say hybrid, we essentially mean that there are multiple different providers. So for example, in the presentation, with the PowerPoint presentation earlier, you heard reference to Azure, which is a Microsoft product. So we have to, we have that product, we have to pay for maintenance on that product. And then we also have, we have 9.2 with Oracle for finance. So we do have some of the Oracle functionality has been put in place. I don't have the information regarding why that project did not go to completion other than I was told that there were cost overruns and there were decisions to not complete the project because of that. So based on that knowledge, we looked at how to get, which phrased here in that last slide, looking at it as being a fixed cost in the sense of, we know that to do Phase One at this point from 9.0 to 9.2 is the, the dollar amount stated in the slide, which is approximately $1.4, $1.4. which is approximately $1.43 million. That brings us all, that brings us onto the Oracle Cloud, which means that we have updates like you would get on a consumer software, where essentially it just pushes it out. You click a button, you say okay, and that's, I mean, I'm simplifying it here, but that's roughly how you get your upgrades. And then within Phase Two, Phase Two is really, the expense there is really talking about what the district needs from a technological standpoint to be able to complete our work in an efficient manner. So when we're looking at costs, essentially, these are investments in technology that... Sorry, I just got some feedback there. But these are investments in technology that we have to make because our current system is not, it's not functioning. And the ongoing expense, one, looking at the operating expense, it's higher than what we would pay for operating expense over the course of five years with this Oracle project. But then there's also the expense that we incur when, because we're doing things manually, we can't meet deadlines because it takes us three weeks, four weeks to do something. Whereas with technology, we do that in a fraction of the time. And so we avoid, we avoid some late penalties there as well. And then in terms of the, when we're, again, when we're looking at the total cost of this project that being 6.3 million, it's important to note that, you know, approximately, it's actually more than a third of it. More than a third of that cost is in operating expenses. And those operating expenses are lower than what we're paying now for a kind of patchwork system that doesn't provide us the functionality that we need. And then to answer the question in terms of the technology master plan, yes. So we'll be working on that as well. Because again, the project timeline for this is implementation within approximately 12 months. And then we're looking at having a system for approximately five years, which is why we have the operating costs in there for five years. So we realize that it is a project that, you know, it'll take some time to build. We'll operate it for some time. But then with all technology projects, eventually tech changes and you have to upgrade your system again. It's just kind of like doing maintenance on a physical building. You build a building, it's beautiful in 1975, but by 1995, you have issues where it's non-compliant with some regulations. Some things are falling apart and you have to put the money into it to fix it and bring it up to code.
I have trustee Weinstein and then the chancellor.
Can someone unmute me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So a few things. One, I think what you're saying is that after the five years, there will be changes because there always has to be changes in technology. Is that correct? So that we're looking at a program or a project that's going to work for five years. And then after that, there may be a whole new thing. Or is it just then are we updating what we have?
Oh, so yeah, I'll clarify there. So what I'm saying is that when we're looking at, so the, if we're looking at the cost of the project, the year-one expenses are Phase One and Phase Two. And that's the build, the technical upgrade, and then putting in place the solutions, the business solutions we need through the different PeopleSoft modules. And then to operate that or to maintain that system, we're looking at it from, right now, from the project standpoint, we've budgeted for maintaining that system for five years. Where technology will be in five years is anyone's guess.
So, I mean, that's significant. That's not minor. And, you know, obviously, we need to move up in terms of what we have to do because we're very outdated in a million different ways. But when you talk about the master plan, doesn't the master plan come first and then we figure out what we need from there? Or are you figuring out what we need and then we're creating a master plan? And so, and lastly, because I'm afraid that you're going to answer it and that'll be it. But so is Oracle now our company? The company that we're going to be working with? And is Oracle, I assume, is local? So there won't be plane rides and stuff like that, cost for that, I assume. But, you know, we're choosing Oracle, if I understand correctly. Maybe we could be choosing other things or maybe we can't. Just speaking from one trustee, to do this, make a decision like this and this kind of information in a couple of nights, having read something and then just saying yes or no, I find troublesome. I actually think this is something that, while I understand we need it and we need to move ahead, it's almost like we could use a study session on this, where we have a history of this is where we were, this is where we're going, and this is where the future is. Because it seems to me that in five years, we may be totally different, in a different, using a different thing. So it's a little bit challenging to just say, yeah, go ahead. I'm sure it's fine.
Yeah, so there are a couple of different points there. So when we're looking at the technology master plan, that's a lot broader. Because then you're, so it's important to understand that we still have what I'll call kind of like small solution software. So there may be an issue, for example, where the colleges need to provide a service to students and there's a third-party vendor who provides a very specific software. We would still potentially enter into contracts to have that service provided. So there are situations like that. But we have to look at this as kind of what you, if you're looking at a tree, this is the trunk of the tree that allows, you know, us to get everything done. And in the absence of a strong tree trunk, the tree falls over, right? The wind blows and tree falls over. What we essentially have here is this is the tree trunk that, based on conversations that occurred long before I got to the district, conversations regard, or let me rephrase that, meetings regarding what we need to move forward, this was viewed as the best decision for the district based on the technologies that we had and the business needs that we have going forward. My point regarding the five-year time span is really just looking at how we budgeted over time. So the breakdown is that in Year One, we incur expenses for the Phase One build-out, the Phase Two build-out, and some operating expense. In Years Two, Three, Four, and Five, we only have the operating expense, which is a slightly different amount year over year, but approximately $580,000 to $600,000. And when we look at that operating cost, that's at a significant savings compared to what we're paying now because now what we're paying is approximately $750,000, $800,000. I'm saying approximately there in a different way because we have a lot of variable costs in that system. So with the variable costs, we may be paying even more than $800,000 for a system that doesn't provide us with the business solutions that we need. Whereas here, we have the opportunity to get the business solutions that we need in place within 12 months and then to run that system for at least five years. And it's budgeted, is budgeted that way. And then we can look at things over time. So when we're looking at the tech master plan, we'll look and say, okay, so our core business solutions are provided by Oracle. We know that we have this system in place for a minimum of five years. We understand that there may be some other technologies, you know, whether that be a software as a service or less likely a platform as a service, but more likely software as a service, where we'll still need to have kind of like these ancillary things that address very particular needs. But even, but to be clear, the part of the technology, the technology master plan is really looking at it being deliberate and deliberative in terms of what types of additional software we're getting, if any. So what I refer to is when we do an inventory of our software stack, which I've talked to with the executive team, when we do the inventory of our software stack, what we're looking at is how many different types of, or how many different vendors are we using for software solutions? How many of these software solutions overlap in terms of services provided? And then if we get rid of some of them, do we have any gaps that need to be filled? Or can we get rid of some things because they're totally duplicative? And then we have cost savings. So when we look at it that way, that's the technology master plan, looking at how do we acquire software? How does it add on to the systems that we have? So to use the earlier analogy, PeopleSoft is the trunk. These additional software are kind of like branches and leaves that may be necessary to add on in certain circumstances. But when we do that, we have to be deliberate about it and not just say, oh, there's a new software, we want to buy it. You pay X number of dollars for it and then the solution provides us something that we're already paying for.
One last question is, who oversees the technology? I don't know, technology, program, project, system, et cetera. Like, who is the overseer of that?
Yeah, so in terms of the way the, just the business structure is now, is that, so Director Mulley is the IT director and so the staff within the IT team and the consultants within the IT team work directly with him. And then he reports to me in my role as chief of staff. And so quite honestly, we have conversations, no less than once a day, where we're working through the different issues that come up with IT and how we're kind of addressing the fact that, you know, the infrastructure we have now is outdated. We need to update it. And then kind of our solutions to do the best that we can with what we have until we get what we need and with this project, we have what we need in 12 months or less. Well, actually, it is less. We'll have some of the things we need in less than 12 months. We should have the majority of the things we need by the end of that 12-month project plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, so the director of the IT, does he, is this what he's recommending?
Yes.
And when he recommends it, does he go to you?
Well, yes, he comes to me, but it's a collaborative, collaborative in the sense of we have the conversations to see, you know, essentially, you have the presentation of, these are the perceived business issues that we have and what solutions can we put in place so that these things are resolved or at least significantly mitigated? And it's the recommendation from the district staff who've all worked on this that we move forward with the plan that we've presented. And I see the chancellor, I'm going to chime in.
Definitely, the chancellor is ready to come in. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, and thank you very much. A number of things. First, trustee Weinstein, the recommendation is coming from me. And that's a culmination of the professional expertise of my staff that have done the work, taken it through the different processes and made a recommendation to me. That recommendation has been scrutinized for its content, for the process that we have used, for the amounts that we would spend on that, and then to make sure that it meets all of the requirements that we would have, that we would have to be able to meet in order to execute a contract. The second thing is that Peralta is embarrassingly and woefully behind on its technology. And the consequence is, to the point of all of the other trustees' questions, is that there absolutely will be a return on the investment almost immediately. Right now, Peralta goes through manual processes to keep up with the leave balances, for an example. It goes through manual processes in order to accrue vacations, et cetera. And when it does that, it does not have the ability to put in place the technological systems that would allow accurate accrual, stopping within the limits and accurate maintenance of the leave balances. When we did the reorganizations, the district reorganizations, I did have leadership in of the different divisions asking for employee positions to be added to the district because somebody had to be able to do all of that manual spreadsheet work. So to the point, for an example, I left off these positions out of human resources. Those positions would be four positions that were put in for all of the different manual things that are in human resources. And those four positions, by the time you look at salary and benefits, could well lead up to a half a million dollars. That's just starting in one division. The other thing is that we have, because we have looked at it over a turn of five years, it's not that the system's going to go away in five years. PeopleSoft and this district has made an investment in PeopleSoft and PeopleSoft is going to be here for a while until the district decides that it wants a different enterprise system. And the kind of disruption that it took in order to bring PeopleSoft in, much less to take PeopleSoft out, the district will have to determine whether it wants to do that. But right now, what we do know is that it has solutions for us to be able to do the work that we need to be able to do and serve the community and that the board has made an investment and we need to build upon that investment, which means make sure it functions to the point that we need it. So when we look at five years, what the reason we're talking about five years is because we've just presented the cost for five years at a time. The reason we presented a cost for five years is that, notice that G C Warden said that you would save, you know, maybe $100,000 or more. That actually, the amounts are increased because right now, for the operations that we have, we pay about up to $930,000 for those operations. With this fixed cost with PeopleSoft, then what we would pay each year totals to be around 500 and 600. It's not exactly the same each year. So that means you're saving anywhere from, you know, $300,000 a year, not just $100,000 a year. When we added it all up based on the actuals and what we have, when we added it all up, I could account for $1.8 million. That's the other point. The other thing is not a single new penny has to be allocated because we are already spending that. As a matter of fact, we'll get the savings. So if we don't act on that, every minute that we're saying that we're waiting to act on that, then that is savings that we are not realizing. That is more money that we're spending, not less. So updating the system, getting us to be in the 21st system century. I can tell you that when I came here and the first time I got something sent over to me that had still had triplicate copies, it took me back to 1975 and most institutions are not at that place. Getting us to an updated system, making sure that students have access to kind of modules that they need to have access to. HR has it, finance has it, et cetera. Even having the fixed asset inventory that would normally be implemented in PeopleSoft, but no, we have to have a different contract because that's not leveraged right now to be able to do that. There is a tremendous amount of savings. And to me, I bring to you a recommendation from the professionals. You may, trustee Withrow describes himself as old school. You identify that you don't have expertise in that area. You don't have to. We have that expertise for you. That's why I have a professional staff to bring forward a recommendation to you about how to proceed.
Chancellor, thank you, thank you for that explanation. I think, I think there are trustees who still want to engage in a dialogue. But I do want to take chair's privilege right now. I've been a trustee now for six years. It's pretty incredible. And every year that I've been here, this board has approved a significant dollar amount for IT improvements, IT upgrades, IT enhancements. It just, this board has not been reluctant at all in passing and adopting a major funding for IT improvement. But it's like a never-ending story, right? We're still, we're still in 1975, we're still. And so we don't, as a board, we don't understand why. We have some assumptions about why. But like our OPEB, which goes way beyond our head, we have a set of professionals, bond lawyers, financial advisors, who we pay top dollar to advise us on behalf of the district. They work for the district. They give us, those are highly educated experts in their fields. And there's something amiss here because I'm not really sure who the point of contact is, whether it's one point of contact, whether we have a team, and if that team is responsible... Um, and if that team is responsible for pulling together such an elaborate um IT uh project, it would be good to educate the board um so that the board has a clear understanding. Um, I, I think the information brought forward is good, but we've been down this road. We've, we've definitely been down this road. Um, and so I, I think what the trustees are, what I'm hearing is that they need a level of assurances um that, um, that this is the right, not, not just the right path, but that they, but that there is um some accountability measures built into this that we understand and we know we're gonna get what we're paying for. Um, it's just that, I, I don't know how else to say this. We've been here, I've only been here six years. Trustee Handy has experienced this for almost the twenty years that she's been here as a trustee. And so I don't know what makes this different. And, and I'll, I'll leave it at that for a second. And if there are no other... I, I, I see trustee Weinstein, uh trustee Weinstein. I was trying to raise you. Go ahead, trustee Weinstein.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to um kind of uh back up what President Bonilla was saying. For me, anyway, this is not about not trusting the people who are bringing us the information. We totally trust the people who are bringing the information. It is, I believe, a generous board because every time technology is brought up to us, we agree to it. It's not as if we're trying to say we don't want to do it. We, we have to look at it in somehow, we, it has to be presented or looked at or find a way to understand it so that it's done in a different manner. Because I just, I, I think what um President Bonilla is saying i- is correct. Th- this board is generous when it comes to technology. We will support everything that has been presented to us. But this is a big amount of money, so I'm just hoping that we can find another way to, to, uh, if we are going to, to support it, find another way to approach it. That's it.
Maybe I'll jump in. Um, and, and I think that we've already covered common thoughts. Um, if there is a way to do a study session on this, I think that that would be a good approach. Um, you know, G C Warden referred to this as the tree trunk. And I think that this district, having only been here for a little while, but looking back at the records, this district has engaged in a lot of very expensive tree trunks. And so we understand the criticality of it, but I think that we just want to ensure, maybe via study session, that, that this is the way to go. And the other thing, you know, for those study sessions, if that's the decision we make, you know, another thing that I would like to hear um in a much more comprehensive way is, what are the lessons learned? Because they, you, the district has been down this path. And I'm looking at the two thousand seventeen assessment um of the PeopleSoft at that particular time. And much of what's being talked about here are some of the recommendations that were on there. And so for me, it's, it's a big red flag in terms of this seemingly not having been there is familiar and has been revisited. But in a much more comprehensive way, I would like to know um through the study sessions, what, how different this is.
Thank you, um trustee Reese. Trustee Handy, did you have a final comment?
Um, I did. And I, I appreciate um my colleagues' same concern. It always looks like this in the beginning. It's what we have in place, the systems that we have in place to make these, this be successful is what we were always lacking. Technology changes every, every eighteen months, it's something new. Six, seven years ago, we weren't using iPhones and now it's changed the world and how we all function. So that's, that's my reluctance on the five-year commitment because we don't know what happens in between. But we have been behind technology for a long time. And a lot of that comes from the constant, constant turnover. And I do not at all feel comfortable not having a, um, a CIO with the PeopleSoft experience being the liaison. With our last um, um, CIO, he actually saved us millions of dollars that our contractors were trying to um move us forward with. And those were items, again, it's a presentation, it looks good. But then again, when it came down to it, it wasn't everything that we needed, that, that we understood. Most of the time, whatever you present is gonna go right over our heads because we are not in that technology, just, we're not in that industry. I know more than I care to know, simply because I've been there from the very beginning and I've heard all the presentations and I know the whys. I know where the skeletons are and where the bodies are buried. I think what this board is asking for is it allow us to be knowledgeable on every aspect that we are approving here. And, and also because this is new, this is not a continuation of what we were doing, Karen. This is, this is more focusing on a totally different um updated system, which I don't know why we weren't looking at that within the past year or two years, unless it was without, that we didn't have the financial resources for it. But this is a totally new piece. None of us disagree that we needed this a long time ago. But we need assurances.
That's right.
And right now, not having that people, that person with the PeopleSoft experience as a liaison to um, to manage the consulting piece versus the um, our employees is something that is concerning for me. I don't know if there's a plan to move forward with that in the future because I didn't know that there was a plan to move to this totally upgraded piece until a couple of days ago. So it's not that I am opposed to this. Um, I appreciate the breakdown in the cost. But what I want, whether it happens tonight or if it happens in the next week, is one, a gap analysis. Again, now, I'm not talking about our um technology report, that's one thing. That's something that we do every year. Nikki was saying we didn't have one, we always have it, it's, it's attached to the um, the dis- the um, the um, the, the DGS report. It's always been done. That's a whole different statement, that's a whole different thing than a gap analysis. Where we are, what we need and how we're gonna get there. And that's the question that I was asking, I didn't get that, that this new proposal was based on that. And um, I, I do have some challenges with that because I don't think the gap analysis has been done. So I support Peralta moving forward, especially if there are bond funds or whatever to make this happen. But what I need is a comments, common language um description, like, or as Cindy suggested, um, where they're, where they're gonna tell us what it is exactly what we're doing. Because if you walked up to me tomorrow and said, what is Peralta doing with technology? I couldn't really tell you. And that is not what we were elected for. We were elected to know and make these decisions. So if we decide to move forward with this tonight, this most certainly does not end here. I want to see where we were, where we're going, and how this is different. And the, and that also we have timelines for deliverables. And if we don't have, if those timelines are not met by Oracle or any other subcontracted piece, then we have an out clause. Because we are, we are committing the district to a contract that none of our terms are guaranteed that many years. So, um, and again, as I said, as, as technology changes every eighteen months, to go out for five years, um, I think that's something we might regret. It may be wonderful, but if it's not, but if we don't have the same administration, we don't have the same trustees, we are leaving that legacy for Peralta to follow. And that is how we got to the amounts that we had before. With the different consulting groups, um, the in-house groups, the consultants that were flying in from the East Coast every day, staying in hotels at expense. It all got there insidiously one day at a time. So I appreciate um the presentation, even though I missed half of it because of my technology won't stay up. But I also want to have more information. And if this was time-specific, if it had to happen tonight, then I want to have assurances that we will get more information, that we understand that really breaks down the technology plan for us so that we can rejoice in it as well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you trustees, and thank you for the presentation. Um, if there are no other questions, we will move forward to our trustee Withrow.
I think I'm, okay. I would recommend that at some point in time, not tonight, but at some point in time, we have a briefing for the board, uh, an educational briefing that would identify what an enterprise system is. Uh, we keep referring to it as PeopleSoft. PeopleSoft was a company that was out in the Pleasant and Livermore area uh and bought out by Oracle. And that's the reason we're tied to Oracle. The enterprise system, which requires uh total standardization throughout, is not well-understood. There's not a lot of talent out there uh that can work with an enterprise system. That's my experience, at least, my understanding. And I think it would be worthwhile to hear the, the, make it come alive. Not in IT terms, but in real-world lay terms on what we've got and how we can deal with it. That's all.
Thank you trustee Withrow. If there are no further comments, we will move um out of our presentation and go to con- the consent calendar. May I have a motion, please? Then moved by trustee Withrow and second by?
Second.
Second by trustee Weinstein, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Uh, student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes, with the reservations and the caveats that I, that I expressed.
Trustee Handy, just to be, trustee Handy, just to be clear, we're on consent. Um, we're, we're, we're not on the IT item, just on consent.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Girl, I'm having so many technology problems. All of them are not working.
I get it, I get it, it's, yeah.
Thank you, I'll continue. Uh, so trustee Gonzalez, you went and had to leave the meeting early, so trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Napolea Bella Reese, was that a yes?
Oh, yes, yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Um, thank you, and I'm so sorry, but I overlooked one piece, madam clerk, which was on item nine point one. There's a slight correction um that you wanted to note.
Thank you. Uh, under consider approval of a request from Mia Kelly to participate in the reduced workload program, under the background and analysis, um, it reads Ms. Kelly's request for a reduced workload at fifty percent shall become effective in the fall two thousand twenty semester and fifty percent in the spring twenty twenty semester. That actually should read, um, Ms. Kelly's request for reduced workload at fifty percent shall become effective in the fall two thousand twenty semester and fifty percent in the fall two thousand twenty-one semester.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, the item's been approved and it looks like it moved forward. So we'll move to our first action item, which is nine point two. Consider ratification of personnel items. May I have a motion, please? Yes, I'm sorry, trustee Brown?
I was left out of the roll call vote.
That was a roll call vote, madam clerk? That was a roll call vote on consent, and did we get trustee Brown in there?
Sorry about that, trustee Brown.
Aye.
Yes.
That was an aye from trustee Brown. We lose you because we don't have your, you go away onto a second page or something. It's terrible. Um, okay, and so we're going to move to action item nine point two. And did I have a motion?
Agreeable.
And a second?
Second.
And we have a second, thank you. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take roll call, thank you.
Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. We will move to item ten point one, consider approval of resolution nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-eight affirming an unwavering commitment to student success and equity. Motion to approve by trustee Withrow?
Second.
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 Second by three trustees, take your pick.
Give it to Meredith.
And we'll, and we'll do a roll call.
Thank you. Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Thank you, and trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item ten point two, consider approval of resolution nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-seven denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment arising due to fears of COVID-nineteen pandemic and affirmation of PCCD's commitment to the well-being and safety of Asian-American communities. Motion to approve?
No moved.
Second?
Second.
Second trustee Weinstein, thank you, and roll call.
Thank you, student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Um, we're moving to item ten point three, approval of resolution nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-one to establish a new treasury fund for the general obligation bond measure G, Fund forty-three. Motion to approve?
No moved.
And second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and take roll call.
Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten point four, consider approval, resolution nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-two to establish county measure E, parcel tax fund, Fund O eight. Motion to approve?
No moved.
Second?
Second.
Second trustee Handy, and roll call, thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten point five. Adoption of resolution number nineteen slash twenty dash fifty-three authorizing election under public contract code, section twenty-two zero three zero to become subject to Uniform Public Cost Accounting Act. Motion to approve, please?
So moved.
It's been moved. That was a second. She scared me. Is that a second from you, trustee Handy? Yes. And roll call. That was very cute.
Family?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Thank you. And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten point six. Consider ratification of a contract with Ray and Associates Cleaning System for deep cleaning at the district sites in the amount not to exceed $700,115.40. Motion to approve?
With approval.
Second.
Moved by trustee Handy, second by trustee Withrow. Roll call.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, trustee Brown.
Yeah, just want to check. I understand that for that the virus pandemic has created special circumstances, but I just want to check and make sure that our regular custodial staff is that they're still working their full regular hours and how just the question is how the addition, the outside vendor will impact our regular employees.
Trustee Bonilla can answer that.
I'm sorry. My, I'm go ahead. I couldn't hear the question because my computer froze.
Trustee Brown was asking, how does this vendor, how does that impact the work of the regular custodial staff? This contract was very specifically for a specialized deep clean once we were put in shelter in place. It's a one-time a one-time exercise that they came in and did some disinfecting. And we also have then the regular custodian staff that continue to do their work with some increased protocols around high-use areas, et cetera. The the contract you're doing is a ratification because we exercised it under the emergency delegation of authority. And we built into that contract the anticipation of what it takes to do all five sites, which is the four colleges and the district site. That did happen. And we it we end up paying an invoice of a little over $500,000. We are reserving about $27,000 as a 5% holdback in order for us to finalize it. But we're basically prepared to sign off on the entire contract. So on the entire job done. So you're ratifying a contract that was $700,000. And ultimately, now that we know the invoice, it only costs a little over $500,000. I want to say five thirty-seven, but VC Sata can correct me with the exact.
Yes, Chancellor. Twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So the regular cleaning and disinfecting, that'll have to go on indefinitely. Excuse me, that that'll be done by our regular employees?
Our our regular our regular custodian maintenance cleaning will be done by our regular employees. We don't know what the requirements are going to be in the future, but our regular custodial work will be done by our regular employees. At the regular employees, as I say, have also had implemented, have also instituted or or executed the instituted enhanced protocols because of the pandemic. And we provide the the personal protective equipment for them to do that as well. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I think so. I think I think what you're saying is that the we we have enhanced deep cleaning protocols now and our employees are doing those. But the initial work, the disinfecting work and the deep cleaning was done by the outside vendor. But our our employees are starting to take over that.
Yeah, so I would say probably, and I'm trying not to get too, you know, caught up in the too technical with the words. We have enhanced protocols that our regular employees are doing. The deep cleaning disinfectant was done with this contract. And VC Sata, am I am I leaving anything out or mischaracterize it in a way that would increase the understanding?
No chance of that. Thank you. The the deep cleaning process was completed by this outside vendor. And the custodians are currently working and will continue to work. And we are working with them to establish additional cleaning measures that you just suggested. But not deep cleaning on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, trustee Brown?
Yeah, I have. I think I have there. I have a couple more questions, but I think I'm I don't need to ask them now.
Okay, okay. I do want to make sure I go back to consent. And so and so unfortunately, I we had a change to consent, and I think it necessitates recalling of the roll call on consent due to the change on nine point one. So if we can just redo the roll call with the changes.
Sure. Student trustee Contreras, excuse me, student trustee Contreras isn't here, but student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy? I'll come back to trustee Handy. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes, I'm back.
Thank you. Trustee Handy, was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, ten point seven. Consider approval of Oracle Cloud Services Agreement in the amount of $6,339,602.95.
Can I make a motion?
So moved.
I think I think go ahead, trustee trustee Reese.
Can I make a motion to table ten point seven or this particular contract until the next meeting and have steady sessions with technological experts in between this meeting and the next?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a we have a motion and it's in seconded to move to table this item to our next board meeting. And I'm sorry, what was the second part?
And to hold steady sessions with technological experts to help us understand it.
Okay. So did everyone hear that?
I have a question. What should be for the chancellor? And I think by the way, I think that the alternate motion makes sense, but what is the downside as far as the organization is concerned by delaying the approval?
The the only thing that I can speak to is that it changes the timeline. We were trying to realize the sooner we realize the modernization and the the migration to cloud technology, the better we are able to use the business solutions that provide. So it delays the timeline of completion, but you know, the it's it's not something that I I don't have an immediate pressing consequence other than that. The the information that I provided you with regard to the impact it has on the different modules has significant implications for us being able to respond to the FIMAC recommendations, be prepared for accreditation, respond to the issues that show up in the audit reports, respond to the issues that show up in CBT reports. So it's those types of things.
Okay, any other any other input or questions? You have a motion to table to our next board meeting with a study session in between from technology. And so discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote.
Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, yeah. It'll come back on the next board meeting.
Yes.
And we're having one because we're not having in-person graduations then.
Correct.
Okay, then I'll vote yes as well.
Trustee Handy?
Yes, we're talking what, two weeks, right?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. And trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
I can't tell if I'm frozen. Am I frozen?
No, you're not.
Thank goodness.
Not anymore. You were for a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Let's move to Board of Trustees Reports. What have all you busybody trustees been up to lately? Oh, let's start with trustee Weinstein. What were you doing today, trustee Weinstein?
Yay. Today, my son was getting married, so.
Azulta.
Thank you.
Wow, that's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you. So we all zoomed in to see what see what was going on, and it was just terrific. And I can't be any happier, really.
Where was the wedding?
In Phoenix, at a temple in Phoenix.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So everything kind of pales next to that at the moment.
Of course.
That's great.
But you didn't have to drive from there to the meeting, though.
No, I did not. Yeah.
That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Well, I've been working with the Community College League of California to provide information regarding response to COVID-19. And we have one coming up for the 21st of May that will have our it'll be regarding supporting our students and two student services giants. One of Lasana Hotep, who now is at the Equity, runs the Equity department at at Skyline College and Dr. Cynthia Olivo of Pasadena, who do great work for their students and their schools, are going to be sort of guiding us through the ways that we could provide, we could link our partnerships with community-based organizations and our college and with different resources provided by the the Community College Foundation and by the state so that our students, when they enroll with us, can have these access to these services as identified as students, not just here's the resource, go or go to the food bank and you can get food. But on our campus, we have or through our school, we have this list of resources or these various resources so that students can get support to connect it to them, not just a list of things that that anyone could get, but actual support, wraparound services for our students. So that's going to be, that's what I've been working on. And it's helping our colleges respond to COVID-19 in a way that makes a difference and lighten some of the burden that our our students are feeling and our trustees are feeling and our faculty and staff.
Thank you. I'm losing my I'm losing my signal.
We can hear you.
Trustee Withrow?
I'll pass.
Trustee Handy?
Just I've been attending the webinars every Thursday for CCLC. And last week was really great because we had the surveys from all of the colleges up and down the states where they asked us specific things about how we're handling our meetings, what challenges we're having, the technology lessons and all of that. It's a very informative meeting, and I think the highlight of every meeting is really the students. And Israel and and how they bring the student perspective to the table on some things where we were all seeing things in one way. But just hearing it from the student changes that whole thing because they're right in the middle of it. And then the students that are on there are so active and involved with all of our other students across the state. So that's that's a high point. I also had the opportunity to have participate in the Peralta Foundation retreat. Retreat from your house is very interesting, especially since I had three Zoom meetings and others all happening at the same time. It was a very stressful day. But I think the highlight of that was to see the competitive piece from our presidents when it came to asking about having a campaign to get employees to sign on for deductions from their paychecks, no matter how small, directly to the foundation. I I have to say, I've been on the foundation since the very beginning. My mentor and trustee emeritus was Amy Stone. And Amy threw you into whatever. And I was like, why am I on Technology Committee? Why I'm in the foundation? But I had the opportunity to grow with Peralta and with the district as the employees raised our first million dollars. And it's through their release time, their dedication, Dr. Riley raised $500,000 himself with sold-out golf tournaments every year. All of our tables of food, everything was done by employees. And that kind of commitment shows that people really don't mind giving if they're asked. When I started as a trustee, I was asked if I would make a monthly commitment out of our stipend, and I did. And that money is there. So when a student comes up that they're going to travel to whatever, I no longer need it for the Congressional Black Caucus because the presidents have stepped up and the student associations. But it's the money is always there for us to support students in their time of need. So even a $25 contribution is is it adds up and it's really supportive. I have to tell you, this is the best foundation group that I have had an opportunity to work with. They are very serious. They are going for the money. Our presidents are amazing. Our chancellor was on that line, and she got a little competitive, too. So I think the district office is going to be raising some money as well. And I also think, also, I want to correct myself. I said Israel. I mean, I think I said Isaiah when it's Israel or it's the other way around for our student, for our young student. I'm sorry, which one is it?
It's Isaiah.
Isaiah?
Yeah.
And Israel is our student. Isaiah is the CCC.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly. Both of them are absolutely charming young men. But anyway, I look forward to seeing what your presidents are going to come up with for the foundation. Money, money.
It is on. It is on.
And even our new president for VCC was on there. That was really heartwarming to see the commitment of you guys on a Saturday. Thank you all.
That was nice. Thank you, trustee Handy for sharing. Trustee Reese?
I'm good. Pass.
Bailey's asleep.
Yeah, same here. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to announcements.
Yes, we only have one announcement. The next regular board meeting will be held as a Zoom webinar on May 28th in two weeks. And that concludes our announcements for the evening, Madam President.
Thank you all so much. I will adjourn the meeting. Everyone have a good evening and a good rest.
You too. Good night. Thank you. Be safe everyone.
Hi Bailey.
Bailey, you see she's step behind? He's looking for her to carry.
I know, I know. Cute.
She has a bath. That's why she can sit in my lap.
She looks good.
We all need groomers and hairdressers, trust me.